First item is just to report that Ms. Sharon Stout will be participating remotely this evening. Public comment, if there's anyone here that would like to participate in public comment at this time would be wonderful. It's mostly staff and admin, so seeing none. Moving on to approval of minutes, the Montomoy Regional School Committee meeting minutes of July 14th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second, I'll second that.
And roll call, Ms. Stout?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
I just have a question. On the, um, part on Finance Subcommittee, it says, um, something was discussed, the last sentence is not in front of me. And I believe that was just, um, the ten teachers or whatever was just reported out by Dr. Carpenter, if I'm correct.
What's your question, Sharon?
Would it be more appropriate to say reported by Dr. Carpenter rather than discuss? I don't remember any discussion, but that's all.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Games?
Based, oh, sorry. Based on my memory, I believe Nancy made the report for Finance Subcommittee and Dr. Carpenter might have weighed in, but I'm pretty certain Nancy made the report.
That's correct.
Sharon, do you want to? To say that Nancy Scott reported rather than there was discussion?
Well, I think it says the Finance Subcommittee met, uh, well, hold on. Um, if you feel, you can make, you can make a change, you can suggest a change for the minutes if you want to do that.
My suggestion is that whoever did the reporting that just said reported, I don't believe there was discussion, but if the Subcommittee feels like they're wrong, I'll defer.
Yes, Leah?
If I were to add Nancy Scott and finance subcommittee reported back on meeting held.
Ms. Stout, if Leah amended the minutes to say that Nancy Scott reported out on behalf of the Finance Subcommittee that met on July eleventh, Monday, July 11th, and then to discuss the review, would that work?
When do phone, when do phone?
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so if everyone agrees on the amendment, um, we have a motion, we have a second. So I'll do roll call. Sharon?
Aye.
And Danielle?
Aye.
Tina?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
And I am an aye, thank you. And we're looking for approval of the Montomoy Regional School Committee Workshop Minutes, August 10th of 2022.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yep.
Could it identify at the top with the people present that I was not present, there wasn't a link? So I wasn't present.
Well, but we can, we can make a section that says not present?
That's fine, thank you.
Yep. Um, Leah, can you just make after under present, put not present and the members that were not present? Because I would go under there as well. If everyone agrees with that, we will move forward with a motion, we have a second, and roll call, Ms. Stout? Ms. Stout?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Tolly?
Aye.
Ms. Games?
Aye.
Ms. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Henderson?
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain because I wasn't there. Thank you. All right, moving on to reports and discussions. Um, first item on the agenda tonight is the school handbooks, updates and changes for Chatham Elementary, Harwich Elementary, Montomoy Regional Middle School, and the Montomoy Regional High School. Um, first person up would be Mr. David Alexander on behalf of the high school.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So we have six changes that we've made to the handbook, and I'm here to answer any questions you have about them. The six topics were, uh, changes to our midterm offerings, uh, in terms of no longer offering midterm exams. We revised our final exam exemption policy, so that it applies to all schools. Uh, we also revised our tardy policy and our cell phone policy, as well as our anti-vaping program, Project Connect. Uh, and then we also changed some of the wording around our jostle hour to deal with students who are family to attend, extra help, uh, and enrichment offerings. So if you have any questions regarding the memory, you got them, happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. Um, open for questions or discussion for Mr. Alexander? It's pretty thorough, I don't see any question. Uh, Sharon, is your hand raised, or was that from before?
Well, as it's raised, I just want to, um, praise, uh, Mr. Alexander and the committee. We're doing some hard work, especially on one of these things, but, uh, we'll probably get a lot of resistance, but I admire, admire the decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stout. And anyone else? All right, great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Next up is Montomoy Regional Middle School. Um, Abigail Dudley?
Hi, everyone, I'm Abby Dudley, I'm our assistant principal. I've met some people in the room, but some people I have not. Um, this is my third year going into the role. All right, um, so you have a copy of the changes that we are proposing, and I'll kind of go through the sections. So we updated our principal letter. Um, our unified arts offerings this year have shifted. Um, library will be an offering in unified arts in place of community service learning, and then world language is updated to include Mandarin, which we're really very excited about. Under grading, we, over the past couple of years, have moved to posting quarterly grades on Aspen. And through some conversations with teachers and families, we're going to additionally be providing a printed copy as a piece of our advisory curriculum this year, so that's in addition to. We added some descriptors for academic recognition, specifically our quarterly honor roll, eating of excellence, and honor society. Under the family communication, we just clarified some language so that we could remind parents and families that they can always see behavioral incidents in Aspen, adding that they'll be notified by phone when there's a substantial behavior incident, and that teachers will continue to communicate when there are minor incidents that occur in the classroom. Dress code, clarified that sunglasses cannot be worn on their eyes while in building. Strapless items are not permitted. Uh, we removed the language around the mask mandate and then added a component of if dress code issues become tardy that they will also be documented and the caregiver will be notified. Under class attendance and tardies, uh, teachers do take attendance at the beginning of every period, but we wanted to add some structure to that, so added if a student's tardy at three times to one teacher's class, um, that that will be documented and the teacher will be working with the family to remedy, remedy the situation. Um, and then if it is not remedied, the administration will support. Under conflict resolution, the, um, section of the handbook didn't actually have the conflict, conflict resolution component, so we added that administration and counseling will facilitate the conflict resolution when students have a peer issue. Uh, noted in here reflects current practices, but was not in the handbook. Uh, added locker rooms to the places where one should not be loitering. Under clubs, we, um, are really trying to work with the students to, you know, have student-created and student-driven clubs, so we added language encouraging students to propose club ideals. Counseling, um, oh, did I skip the masking part?
Yeah.
Okay. That was since I printed this, since removed from the handbook altogether. Counseling, uh, we just updated the language, so we're making a shift from using the term guidance to counseling, and that's to reflect DESI, um, as well as the American Council Counseling Association, and to kind of reflect the shift in the role over the past few years from, um, to increase mental health and social emotional support. And then last is the student leadership group. So we have revised kind of your traditional, um, student council where children are elected by homeroom to a student leadership group, and it is instead of an election-based, it's an application-based, um, program that is different to all students to apply. So if you have five leaders in one homeroom, that is fine. Okay. Whereas in the past, it'd be vying for those spots. That is it, happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you so much. Um, any questions? Yep, Ms. Games?
Yes, um, thank you. I, the student leadership, so if I understood what you just said, so if five students apply, that means all five get it?
No.
Oh.
But all five would be eligible. So the problems we were running to with the previous system is there'd only be one child that would be allowed per homeroom. So some homerooms would have multiple kids interested, other homerooms would have none. Um, so this was a way to be more inclusive and kind of shift, um, the narrative around student leadership from like a, um, you know, like vying for boots, that kind of thing that we probably all went through when we were in middle school.
Yep.
Um, to kind of shift it so it's more focused on actually the work.
Okay, great, I love that.
It's been fantastic, and I have the kids coming tomorrow morning to help out.
Oh, good.
Good.
Well, I think it's a great decision, particularly for middle school.
Thank you.
Um, I'm just curious, who reviews the applications and makes the decision?
So the, um, club advisors are myself, Ms. Allen, who's a fifth grade teacher, and Ms. Bosford, who is a sixth grade teacher. So between the three of us, we review the applications. Last year, we had 40, we were able to accept all students, so if it's around, if it's under 50, we will be able to accept all. But if it's more than 50 that apply, we will have decisions to make.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions, discussion? Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, moving on to Harwich Elementary School, Allison Joy? Oh, both of you? All right, great. And Christie?
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Hello. Thank you for having us, I'm Christie Cattell, I'm the new principal at Harwich Elementary. Thank you for what you're doing for our community, and thanks for having me here.
And I'm Allison Joy, I'm the assistant principal at Harwich Elementary, I second, thank you. So thank you very much for having us and welcoming us, welcoming us. And I think we've been here about four, five, six weeks, somewhere in there, between the two of us, I guess. Each of us has been. So we were very fortunate that Jacqueline Perry, um, is a, she's a teacher at Harwich who is in an administrative licensure program, and she needs practicum hours. And so as we stepped into our roles, she, um, quickly stepped up and said, let me help you with this task because I know the school and I can make these changes that need to be made in our handbook. And she kind of talked us through some of the things, so we attribute all of these changes to her. She even made this document for us, so we take zero credit except for the idea of presenting it to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, uh, the first change that we have in our handbook is just the leadership changes, so our names and contact information. And we did write a letter, um, to the community from us that is personalized from us.
And you'll also see the, um, new link for the school calendar, um, it has been updated in this handbook.
And our staff list is continuing to change, it's changing by the minute right now as we try to fill all of our empty spots. Um, we're almost there, but our updated list is in the handbook, and, uh, administration and school committee members' information has been updated as well.
Um, next up is arrival and dismissal. We have updated this, um, from last year, eliminating door number six as a pickup and drop off. For the students, we will go back to only utilizing door three, um, for parent pickup and drop off, where they enter from Sisson Road to Schoolhouse Drive, and there's two, two-way traffic on Schoolhouse Drive for parents and caregivers during arrival and dismissal. So that's been updated, and parents will be notified of that as well.
And we didn't just make that change arbitrarily, we, um, we polled the staff to see what they wanted to, what felt right to them for next year, whether they wanted to keep last year's or go back to the way it was, so that we were, um, giving credit to the people who've been there and doing it and, and knowing what works best for children. Um, the mask policy under the health section has been taken out of the handbook, and, um, we certainly are going to advertise that masks are optional and encouraged if, if people feel more comfortable.
And I'm sure you're all aware of this, but food services in 2023 school year, 2223 school year is free lunch and breakfast for all the students, um, that attend our school. So that has been updated in our handbook as well.
Fantastic.
Those are all of our changes, and maybe next year when we know what's going on, we'll.
And we're happy to field questions as we can.
Great, thank you. Um, Ms. Henderson?
Just a comment, I'm, um, I'm excited that the arrival and dismissal will go back. It was a well-oiled machine, I'm a Harwich parent, so I know. So I think you'll be happy to see it and come back.
Great, we can't wait to see it.
See it in action. Um, Ms. Rogers?
Just want to say welcome and thank you, and I really appreciate your time, um, polling the teachers to see what they thought would work, and utilizing Jackie, um, grew up in the areas, you know, a great resource. So welcome and thank you, everything looks great.
Thank you so much.
Danielle, did you have your hand up? You didn't.
I did, but, um.
You good?
Yep.
Okay, good. Uh, Ms. Stout, did you have your hand up?
No.
Okay.
Sorry, I missed.
Nope, no, it was your physical hand, that's what I saw out of the corner of my eye. Okay, great, thank you so much and welcome.
Thank you and welcome.
We'll see you again soon, I'm, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And last but not least, Chatham Elementary School, Ms. Jen Kelly? Unfortunately, she's running a little bit late, so. Mr. O'Shea is gonna step in. He looks a little like Jen Kelly. Here we go.
Good evening, everyone, Chatham Elementary Principal, I should be able to do this. Uh, that was a joke for a sec. Good evening, Sharon, out there in the world. I have not prepared myself, and so I'll read through these. I think Joy will have some insight if I can't answer all your questions related to Chatham Elementary. If I stall long enough, Jen Kelly will be here. So staffing, there are new phone extensions, there's new staff. Jen Kelly can tell you about all those new staff members, um, and the changes in positions. I can tell you about middle schools if you want to hear about those.
Just keep going.
Gotcha. Arrival and dismissal, dismissal has been streamlined, and the explanation of procedures, just reading. Staff changes in, or excuse me, updated pickup patrol information, and I imagine they're going back to the pickup patrol the way it had been prior to COVID. RTI and the MTSS, that's the intervention design, the tiered support system. They're changing the intervention plan from the RTI model to the multi-tiered system support model, which is aligned with DESI program. Uh, this is related to academic behavior and social emotional needs. It is, as is everything, we're attempting to do data-driven. And for all students, we want to make sure we are identifying the needs for students, uh, the need for intervention, for remediation, intervention and extension enrichment, which is consistent across all the buildings. Any questions?
Thank you. It's not like you haven't been here before.
I know.
I know. I think you did great. I mean, I, I had to say it. Um, anybody have any questions for our substitute, Chatham Elementary School principal? I think you pretty much covered it, it's self-explanatory, but I'm sure we can follow up. Okay.
Great job.
Great, thank you.
I always like how our senior principal can step up.
Can just step in, right? Step right back into that footprint. Awesome. Thank you, everybody, and it's lovely to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving on to the math curriculum being presented tonight by the CIA.
Good evening, everyone, Mark Smith, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. Just give a second for my slide that I have loaded up here. So, um, so I'm here tonight to, uh, present to the committee two things. One is, uh, a, an overview of the process in line with the committee's, um, policy for, um, for curriculum. Whenever we're adopting a new resource, uh, it's part of our, part of your policy for, for me or for superintendent says to me, to come to and present to you, uh, the, the new, uh, resource and the process that we went through for the adoption. And, uh, with this resource, uh, we've also are going to be entering into a, a contract agreement with a vendor that extends beyond three years, which hits another policy, which requires school committee to agree to, uh, a contract longer than three years. So sort of two tiers to that. Michael would normally be presenting sort of on the contract end of it, um, but I'm gonna try to kill two birds with one stone here, because Michael's not with us, and so, and I'm not gonna try to do a burp, but. All right, so, uh, I'm starting, I'm starting with how we got to where we are. So, uh, I'm gonna have my van ahead, so here's the, the timeline on sort of how, where we started to where we are today. So, starting all the way back in the spring of 2021, uh, myself and Ms. Police identified that the students in the math department didn't have a high-quality textbook in front of them in our key courses, right? So eighth grade math, algebra one, geometry, algebra two. They didn't have a consistent tech, textbook in front of them. They, the teachers were pulling together resources and curating their own resources. This then led us over that, that summer and into the next fall to do a deeper investigation into what resources and materials were being utilized, and recognizing that it was time for us to, uh, enter into a process of, um, investing in higher-quality instructional materials for our students, which led us then into developing a budget proposal, which we brought before you as the committee. Um, we had a discussion during the budget workshop, I can't remember exactly when that was, December, January last year, where we proposed and ultimately brought through the budget process, um, successfully that we were gonna pursue, um, uh, new math resources for the, for the high school. So that, once that had gotten through that process, um, enabled us to start a textbook, uh, or develop a textbook adoption team in here at the high school and initiate our process in the district for, which I'm gonna bring us to an external link in a second to, to sort of overview that process, but, uh, to initiate the process for a curriculum resource adoption. About, well, as we started that process in the spring, we were actually applied for, or I found out about, and then we applied for, and then were awarded a grant from the department, uh, an accelerated math grant would actually help to fray some of the costs. Uh, in June, the team made a selection, and then actually just last week, the team started some professional development. They actually came in the summer to get, they really were, it was important to them to make sure that they started at the beginning of the year successfully, so the math department was actually in this very room just last week, um, starting their professional learning to make sure they launched successfully. Yeah. You just click right on, click right on that link. So, um, this, this is on our website, but what this does is this outlines, this is like a ton of detail here, um, but this graphic sort of gives you the, and I have to credit Joy for helping me with the graphic, and by helping, I mean she designed it. The, this, the graphic overviews the process that we use every time we go through resource adoption. This is one of the things over my time here that, um, I've worked to really try to solidify, so we have a consistent process for every time we're gonna bring a new resource into the district, so that we aren't just haphazardly bringing in resources into the district. And it's got a, a consistent set of steps. So first, we develop a team, and again, there's much more detail in the paragraphs that go below about how we develop a team and who's on the team, et cetera. But we always develop a team, but I don't make these decisions, I facilitate the process, um, but I'm never the, the decision maker. I, the team decides early on how the decision is gonna get made, whether they're gonna do it by majority, majority vote, whether they're gonna do consensus, they're gonna take a poll, however they get, they make that decision in the very beginning, but I'm not the decision maker, the team makes the decision, I just facilitate the process. Then we do data analysis to figure out where we are. Um, we look at, again, depending upon what we're looking at, we might, uh, you know, if there's MCAS data available in that content area, so like when we did history, there's no MCAS for history, so we didn't use MCAS data, but, um, but in that, there's MCAS data, right? We had map data, um, we had, uh, grade data, uh, like high school grades, data, GPA data. We talked into a whole bunch of school-based data to figure out where the strengths and weaknesses were for Montomoy students and help build a profile of need, what is that we needed from a resource. Then we use that to establish goals and a vision for new resource materials. And then we develop rubrics based upon what our goals are. So, once you have a set of goals and priority areas, then we build rubrics based upon those, then we go out into the market, we have a process for going out into the market to establish. There's a lot of stuff out there, so how do we figure out, um, what's A, what's available? And then we're gonna use our rubrics, well, we actually don't really use the rubrics yet. There's a process developed from the wide market to narrowing our choices using external, um, like external vetting sources, uh, that allow us to cut. Choosing my words carefully here, cut the not-so-great products out immediately. There are, there are, um, uh, not-for-profits out there that are evaluating instructional materials, so they, uh, you know, they have their own processes for making sure that things, that products are standards-aligned, they are high-quality, um, that they have rigor to them, so that you can automatically just say, we're not even gonna look at these ones because they're not aligned at the standards, we're not gonna look at these ones because the text material is not high-quality enough, or the teachers have already rated them poorly in these areas. So it allows you to narrow your choices down from 20 down to six. So then, once you're down to those, those six, then you can do a deeper dive with your rubrics, then we select finalists, and then sometimes you do a field test. In this particular one, we didn't do, we didn't do a field test. Field test depends on whether or not you can make a choice from your finalists or not. But our team was able to make a choice out of the finalists and didn't need a field test. So that's our process. It's a consistent process, we use every single time. And this is because, you know, again, I didn't develop this process entirely on my own. This process comes from work that I did with the Department of Ed three, four years ago before we went into the ELA adoption. And it's, and it's because, um, organizations like the Department of Ed and this other group, this national group called Ed Reports, they have found through their research that oftentimes the way curriculum resources make their way into districts is by either, you know, so-and-so knows somebody else in another district that uses this resource, or this vendor already has a relationship in your district, and so therefore, you know, hey, we use this vendor for our socialized text, so let's call them up to see if they have a math textbook. And that's not the best way to find the high, best high-quality, uh, product. The best way to find a high-quality product is have a consistent process to establish, align with their values, making sure that it's aligned with the standards, to make sure it's high-quality, et cetera. So this is a process that brings you from, that brings you that way, not from who do you already have pre-established relationships with. So anyway, so that's our process. Let me go back to the slide there. So, aligned with that process, I want to show you how we got to where we were. So, we, oh, go back one side. So we established a team, so this was our team, made up of a good chunk of the math department, not same, not every single member of the math department at the high school, but almost all the members of the math department, and then also included principal police and myself on that team. And then the first thing that we did was that team established an instructional vision. So this was the instructional vision that they came up with, I'm not gonna read it to you, um, but that is, I'll give you a second to read it if you haven't already had a chance to read it. But that is through some discussion based upon the data, based upon their beliefs as teachers, this was the instructional vision that they came up with, which is important because when we got down to the finalists, ultimately, you, you're, you're starting with high-quality materials, like we vet out all the junk in the beginning, and you get down to ultimately, we got down to two or three finalists, and you're looking at good stuff. And so it ultimately comes down to, what do you believe is the best match for the way you want to teach? And so we came back. And so we came back to this and multiple times, but at the very end, it was like, so which one of the materials that we're looking at, which of the finalists best aligns with the way we want to teach? And that's ultimately why we landed on the one that we landed. Next slide, please. And so then we also established priority areas. So in, like what was our non-negotiables? What had to be in a product in order for us to bring it in to look at more closely? So this was sort of part of our first cut. Our first cut, they had to have these six things in them in order for us to bring the, for, basically for me to go out and request from the vendor for us, for them to send me the materials so that then they could do the deep dive with the rubrics. So these were the six priority areas that they came up with. Again, it was based upon the data, based upon their experience and what they were looking for as teachers in the materials. Next slide, please. This is an example, I pulled two, so you'll see on this one and then on the next slide. These are just two examples of the rubrics that we created based upon the priorities. So what we did is, so we took the broader priorities, you see there instructional materials must be aligned with college and career-ready standards and instructional shifts, so that was one of our priority areas. And then we further defined, well, what does that mean? What does that look like? And then created a rating scale from does not meet to fully meets. And then they used these rubrics, once we got the actual physical materials in hand, to go into the actual materials and look through the actual materials and rate them, each of the materials. Each of the teachers did this independently with the materials. Next slide, please. And then just, yeah, so then that was just another example, again, breaking down just a different one of the priority areas, but they did this for each of, each of the, each of the seven, each of the set of materials for each of the priority areas. And then, next slide. So then we ultimately ended up with three finalists. They were all highly rated, the rubric scores were pretty close, right? There wasn't like one that was glaringly high and the other two that were glaringly low. We brought those three vendors in to do presentations about their materials. The team had developed a set of questions, a consistent set of questions, like basically like interviews, right? They'd interview a set of questions that they interviewed each of the vendors with to dig deeper into their priorities and ultimately came back to what was the, how did the materials match their instructional vision and their needs as professionals? Next slide. And ultimately, after that extensive research and that discussion, they landed on the vendor for, which is called Carnegie Learning. And the key factors that ultimately led into that decision was the product is a highly-rated product on both an external review, so the product, the extra, this external review source is called Ed Reports, there's also one that is a Massachusetts-specific one called Curate, but Ed Reports is a, is a, is a national reviewer. It's very highly rated on Ed Reports. It was also highly rated on our internal review, so those priority rubrics. And then it was a strong match for our instructional vision. Specifically, the teachers noted that the lessons were designed around student engagement, they were designed around inquiry. There was regular review of material both in the lesson design and also in a technology-based portion that comes with the product. There was a strong match between the physical materials and the digital materials, which was important to the teachers, and there was built-in differentiated support. And then the other real strong piece that stood out for the teachers, which you'll notice a pattern for with our ELA, curriculum adoption as well, or resource adoption as well, was an organizational commitment to professional learning, right? So while we asked questions to the other two vendors about the way that they would support the teachers with professional learning, you know, they talked about their ability to do it and that they could provide, and yes, they would work with us to do this, that and the other thing, but this organization, they, they really talked about their pride and that they actually have a whole separate part of their company that provides professional learning to districts that are not implementing their resource, right? So they have a whole professional learning wing that supports teachers in math instruction outside of their product. And that was really a thing that stood out to our team and, you know, it was, we've learned a lot from the ELA, the K to four ELA adoption that we really need to support these new resource adoptions with professional learning. And this organization was one that was very much aligned with the lessons that we learned from the ELA adoption. So then the contract piece, as I mentioned, there is a, there's like two parts to this story, and I think Mike, Mike will put the memo, there's a memo in your packet, but the, so it's a, it's a little bit complicated in that it's a, it's a seven-year contract, except it's really a six-year contract. So it's a, it's a six-year contract that we're paying for and Desi's paying for the first year. So that's the grant that we were awarded, is the department of ed is paying for the first year of the materials and they're paying for three days of the professional development. We purchased additional days of professional development in the first year and textbook companies are getting smarter, so what you wouldn't normally expect, but this is a consumable textbook, right? So you don't think about consumable textbooks at the high school level, but textbook companies are learning that, especially at high school level, high schools like buy one class set of textbooks and then they-
Twenty years later or more?
Well, and they just get digital versions for all the other kids in the classroom, right? So this company, it's a consumable textbook for all the kids, so there's a reoccurring cost for textbooks each year, so it's not a very, it's not a very expensive textbook, but it's like, it's like a paperback book that you have to buy every year. So the contract we are entering into is to purchase student textbooks every year for the next seven, well, six years beyond the year that Desi's paying for. So Desi's paying for this year and then we're paying for six years after that, but they're allowing us to spread the cost over seven years, if that makes sense. So, so, so we're going to start paying them now, even though Desi's paying for the first year. We're like spreading our costs over seven years, even though technically Desi's paying for year one and we're paying for years two through seven.
So we're paying less?
We're paying less each year, yes. And because, and we're putting, we, we have PD in the first year that we're paying for. So we're taking those costs and we're spreading them out over seven years is the contract we're going into.
Thank you.
If the Scottish guy was here, he'd be able to explain.
He'd be a moving buffet.
Yeah.
I just say it wrong every time, too. I know that's not right. Move the fees, yep, yep, something like that. Alright, so-
It'd be an expression that we go along with the time, he'd be able to explain.
Questions for Mark, Ms. Henderson?
I just have two, and you probably said it. Grades eight to 12?
Eight, well, so eighth grade, algebra one, geometry and algebra two.
Okay.
So it kind of depends upon when kids take those courses.
Where they are, okay. But all new this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Implementation this year, correct.
And then, so basically, we're looking at almost 22,000 each year for the next seven years?
Yeah, breaks out, there's a little bit more this year and then it's like 19,400 something dollars five years after.
Okay, around 20 for the next. And is, was that in our, I should know this, never mind. I'll look at myself.
Okay. Ms. Tolly?
Thank you so much for this. I really, I think you know this about me, I'm sort of a process geek and I really loved and appreciated the process that you laid out about how the district approaches adopting and evaluating curriculums. I just thought that was really excellent and I did have a couple of questions. And one was the Desi, the, the grant that we got from Desi, was that a surprise or was that anticipated when we were having budget conversations? I just don't remember that.
It was a surprise. I, I found out about it actually from this vendor when I originally called this vendor to ask them to send them the materials. When I met with Erin, it's her name, my contact, she said, oh, are you aware of the Desi accelerated math grant? So no, I didn't know anything about it. So she was actually the one who turned me on to it and so I, I found out about it afterwards.
Well, that's great.
And it wasn't until April, I think was when I found out about it.
That's great. And then one other, just I guess commendation is hearing that there's such a strong commitment to professional development from the company, I think. I've been so impressed with what we've heard and learned from ARC and, and the way that teachers have been supported, so I'm really glad to see that this is part of this curriculum set as well. And then one final question is, I think during the budget conversations when we were talking about this and, you know, I'm, I'm naive to the historical context of how we got here beyond that we didn't have the set of, set of textbooks. How long, and I think I had asked you about it and you had said, well, there was, and I'm paraphrasing here, but had been a sort of pedagogical trend to teacher-created materials. And I'm just wondering, just for, to get a broader timeline here, like how long was that the trend and how long was the district operating sort of in that space before this point where there's a realization that we should get consistent, you know, a, a curriculum?
So I would say we didn't have a curriculum.
No, sorry, not a curriculum, the textbooks.
It was just, yeah, this particular like consistent resource for the kids. And, you know, they had access to a consistent digital resource. It was having something anchored at home and, and it's not just a modern way thing, right? So, you know, anybody who's been in education for more than two hot minutes, you know, will hear the, the phrase of the pendulum swing, right? And so there's, and there's, and I'll run into people now who don't think necessarily, like when they hear the phrase high-quality instructional materials, they, they think things like basal readers and, and teachers on like page, all teachers have to be on page 17 on January 3rd, like they're thinking that that's the way education's going, right? That it's so structured that it's like a step-by-ways. And that's not the direction that, that we're going. It's more that we have a anchoring resource that we know is standards-aligned, is grade level-appropriate and that is the base, like the analogy I use is like this, the skeleton or the spine, I guess is probably a better analogy, that the teacher is starting from, right? And that he or she already knows is standards-aligned, is rigorous and gives him or her a place to start from. Instead of, when the teacher has to create all of his or her own materials, then they're out curating all that stuff, right? So all their mental energy is going into just finding whatever I need to teach polynomials. And instead, if I have a resource that I know already has good quality stuff around polynomials, then I can focus my energy on, okay, how do I make this lesson on polynomials work for this English learner or for this student who's struggling or for this student already has mastered it and I need to push that student to the next level? And philosophically, where we're moving is give teachers the strong resource that gives them the core piece and allow them to focus their, their energy on differentiation as opposed to all their energy on just finding stuff to get to the need of the lesson, just to get to the standard, right? Make sure they have the stuff that, where they know I'm already at the standard and how do I differentiate for the kids who need it to support them or not.
Ms. Games?
First of all, I want to commend the, one of the priorities, number six, materials that support non-English speakers. I love that. I love that that was a priority. I did have a question though on the financial piece, just, and pardon me because I'm thinking back to the ELA curriculum and the process we went through for that. So you made a comment that you said we've purchased extra materials, so it sounds to me like you have purchased, correct, already?
Yes, we budgeted for this year.
Okay.
The materials, so the department actually already bought this year's materials.
Okay, alright, alright. I was just trying to understand because maybe I just missed if we approved this already, but if we, if we budgeted-
So you approved the budget for this year, which actually technically it's spent because the department spent this year's budget. And as far as the, the way that school committee's policy is written, as far as curriculum, my role is to present to you when we, when we, it's not for approval, it's to make presentations to you when we complete a process. It's not for approval on, unless we're making a significant shift in the way we pedagogically approach. So for example, if I was here to say we were going to, which in full disclosure, the department has had some conversation around, if we were to make a shift from, instead of teaching algebra, geometry and algebra two, we were going to go to integrated math one, integrated math two, integrated math three, that would be something that we would need to come to get approval because that's a significant shift in content and pedagogy. Again, it's just the way the policy's written. But we're not asking to not teach algebra, we're not asking to not teach geometry, we're just putting a new, and we're not changing the curriculum, it's just a new resource in front of students. And I'll come, like if we're going to change an individual textbook, I mean, an individual novel in a classroom, like these are, it's written in the super text, provocative to make these decisions, right? But, but it's my responsibility to present to you the process that we went through, it's the way the policy's written.
Okay.
So-
And that piece is fine, I'm just, it's really more of the financial, the contract because it looks like we're going to make a motion to enter into a contract, but it sounds like if you've already purchased materials, are we already in a contract?
So the, the materials that we have in front of us are the ones the department of ed-
Oh, I see, okay. Alright.
Because I, that was the grant that was awarded.
Okay.
So with the first, that's what I'm saying, like the first year of materials were purchased by the department of ed and we're entering into an agreement for six years beyond that, but they're allowing us to start paying this year. So it allows us to defer the costs over seven years. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. It just sounds to me like we've already agreed to a contract though, is where I'm going with this? I mean, I understand, that's just what it sounds like to me?
In-
Okay.
In good faith, but we haven't-
Okay.
We can't agree to a contract that's beyond three years until you sign it.
I have no issue with, with the vendor. I think you did a great job. I'm, my, my question is really, it's, just sounds like we've already agreed to a contract, at least maybe even verbally, and we're just signing off on it. I, I think that's what I'm hearing, but I could be wrong.
I, it's not, they, they're actually, my thoughts were going through my head and you're pointing it out, but I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around because I remember the ELA very well. So how does this differ from the ELA curriculum?
The ELA curriculum is not a, like a multi-year. We, we reorder every year, individual pieces.
But that was a contract for the curriculum?
Not for the purchase of materials.
So each year we paid that 400 whatever?
No, no, we, we paid that amount of-
That amount of money?
For those materials.
And they only lasted one, they only lasted one year?
No, they're like fixed materials versus consumable materials. So like-
But there were consumables.
Throw, yes, but not 450,000 dollars worth of consumable materials.
I'm just thinking that that would help, I think that would help the committee understand better why this is different. It's a little concerning to-
So it's like-
To get a, a motion to sign onto a contract despite the fact that Desi has paid for the first year, like what if we decided that we, what if the motion didn't carry, you know what I mean? Just a hypothetical, because I think everything without it's perfectly fine, like the curriculum is perfectly fine, no question on the process, no question on that at all, but it looks like we kind of have the cart before the horse, so I think we just need some clarity on that. So I'm, I'm comparing it to the ELA, but I'm not sure if that's a good comparison because they are a little different, I guess, is what you're saying?
So it would be like a, a digital license that we purchase for, for like most of our textbooks at the high school, for example, or actually at the middle school. Like oftentimes when you purchase a six-year license or any multi-year license, you get a discounted rate when you purchase a multi-year, when you purchase a multi-year. If you purchase a single year, it ends up being much, significantly more expensive over the course of those six years. So you enter into an agreement which essentially locks in that price for those years. And like, I'm, we wouldn't go into a math textbook review for a whole new math textbook any sooner than six years from now. Anyways, the team has gone through this whole process, so it's, it's a reasonable timeline to make a commitment. it's a reasonable timeline to make a commitment to say, "We're gonna stick with this particular textbook for six years." And, so, it's essentially locking us into a price to say, "This is how much the consumable textbook is gonna cost us per student for the next six years," as opposed to them saying, "Hey, next year, the textbook costs you, you know, forty dollars per student, and then the following year costs you forty-five dollars per student, and the following year it's gonna cost you fifty dollars per student."
Right.
It also protects us from them jacking the price year after year.
I don't think we're questioning how it's broken out in the purchase of a consumable. I think, to me, and I don't know of other people on the board, it looks more like you've decided on a curriculum, like a math curriculum, correct?
A resource.
A resource. So, the curriculum's not changing. But, the ELA curriculum changed.
Still, it's, uh, there was, I mean, in that case, we were coming to you for a new budget item, which we hadn't previously discussed. Like, it was a bigger budget ask than in this particular...
Well, it's a bigger budget ask, but we're talking about apples and oranges when we're talking about English and math, right? Math doesn't change necessarily, math doesn't change, right? Like, the strategies behind how you teach math changes. So, we're talking about maybe this new strategy, but you're just literally talking about books. So, I'm just wondering, it seems like, I don't know, I don't know. Again, totally fine with the curriculum and everything, it just, the process is a little funky to me, so, but we can look into that, it's not a big deal. Mr. Russell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good job, Mark. Couple of questions you probably already answered that I didn't get it. This outfit has the capability of bringing in a crew to train the staff, even if we didn't purchase their texts?
Yes.
So to speak. We're gonna purchase their texts, and so, our staff will get this training, much like we did with the ELA. Question within that, how high up do we map the kids in that testing?
That's right.
Okay. So, we've got some math data via math, well, not only the teacher scores, but the map. So, you guys have looked at that, this product may introduce it. But also, the trainer, our trainers, when they come in, will be talking to all of our math department people regarding during PD?
Yeah, and on, like, ongoing coaching and support. So, the first two days that they're, the person scheduled to come back will be individual, one-on-one coaching with the teachers, and then, like, scheduled into a PLC.
I don't think I have a question. All I'm doing is talking. You did a good job.
Mark, I had another question. Was the grant tied to this specific, the DESI grant, was it tied to these specific materials?
No.
It was just like, she was like, "Hey, wow, I got you on the phone, there's a grant."
Yeah, there's a list, they had a list of, like, a, I forget, it was like six or eight vendors that you had to choose from these six or eight vendors, which were ones that were pre-approved from those external vendors. They had to be highly rated on that external vendor. So, they were, of the six or eight, they were already, the six or eight we had winnowed down. So, like, when I went and looked, they were already matched to the ones that we were looking at.
Okay, great.
So, you couldn't, they didn't say you had to pick this one, but they said you couldn't pick one that wasn't on this list.
But this didn't go out of what you'd already narrowed down to anyway, so?
Correct.
That was, okay. And, I don't know, whoop. Well, I'm gonna roll. Can I ask one more question, Scott? Can you, okay. My other question was, I remember when we changed the curriculum or materials, whatever it is, in the elementary school, I remember there was a gap specifically between, I believe it was my daughter, maybe, going from, like, second to third grade with multiplication and when it was taught. And I remember, this may have been back in Carlos' years, but I remember, like, so, like, the second grade went into third grade, having, they should have known the multiplication, but they didn't because the new curriculum required it, but the curriculum in second grade didn't. Is this, is there anything that, I mean, we're so far beyond basics at this point in eighth through twelve, that it's not even an issue?
Yeah, we're not making any of those changes. So, again, full disclosure, like I mentioned, the math department had some conversation, because this particular company offers both the traditional pathway, which is algebra in high school, it's Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II, and an integrated math pathway, which is where they blend geometry, algebra, or Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II across three courses that they call Integrated I, Integrated II, Integrated III. So, you get the same content, but they don't section it and parcel it off in those three distinct courses. So, like, algebra, so Integrated I is mostly Algebra I, but weaves in some geometry units. Algebra, Integrated II is mostly geometry, but pulls in appropriate algebra into it, et cetera. The team deliberately made the choice not to explore that, because it was too much transition all at one time, with the understanding that they would like to consider that maybe that's instructionally the best shift for students at Monomoy, but it's a conversation, and then it would be something we would have to come back for approval, because it would be a shift in the way in our, in our curriculum. It would require planning. That was my point to them is, well, then we've got kids in different points in time, and we have to map all that out, and that's a lot for us to, we can't be making that decision in July. So, so, we'd have to, if we decided to go that route, we'd have to make a, now, this company can flexibly make that shift at no cost, and because the texts are consumable, we just order different texts each year. Like, so, instead of you ordering the algebra text, you order the Integrated I text, right? So, we could make the transition. But, again, I'm not sure we're going down that path. It's too early to have that conversation, because we're just starting this, right? And I'm not sure they ultimately want to go down that path. It was just a brief conversation that we had at the end of this process. And it's a much larger conversation that we need to have as an apartment. I'm not sure where I was going with this, other than...
You answered it.
We're not making, we're not changing. Algebra I is still Algebra I.
Right.
Geometry is still geometry, eighth-grade math is still eighth-grade math. So, none of those things are changing. This is just a new resource to help teachers teach those courses.
Got it. Perfect. Thank you. And, Dr. Carpenter?
I was just gonna point out, you know, the substantive thing here is that it's a contract that's beyond three years. You know, so, you know, so, if we were negotiating a shorter contract with them, under three years, there doesn't need to be a committee approval. But, you know, common things that the committee has had come before them, I think frequently, Jim will bring something on, we're entering into a long-term lease for Chromebooks, that's, you know, things that, you know, things that span, you know, span longer time, and it's, when we enter into power purchase agreements, you know, for the wind turbines that, or the solar panels, we've, those are things that the school committee has to vote on. So, you know, so, you know, so, it's, you know, I think Mark would typically come with a presentation on, you know, here's, you know, sort of the direction they're going. But, the reason there's a vote coupled here is the length, you know, to get the, you know, sort of a, a word, you know, fortuitous pricing for the district over the long haul. We need, you know, into a contract that's over three years. So, that's where we need a sort of low piece for the committee.
We could do a three-year, you know, person, as good a price.
Danielle, you shot up first.
So, you know, assuming you guys have done the due diligence, it seems like a really great fit. Paralleling this with the ELA curriculum, we're seeing, you know, like, in real time, the first year of the rollout, we were getting presentations and seeing students' progress and achievement gaps closing, and will we have that with this math curriculum as well? And then, related to that, say, in three years, we're not seeing the outcomes that we had hoped, what are the penalties from, you know, canceling the contract early?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that question. So, I'd have to, I'd have to give that to you on that.
Thank you, Danielle.
I'd be shocked if we did, but I don't, I honestly, if I'm gonna be honest, I don't have the answer to that question, so.
Ms. Games?
Yeah, just another little clarification, if you don't mind, on the money piece. So, in the written motion I'm looking at, so, the total cost is one hundred and fifty-one thousand, one forty-three sixty, and then it says DESI's contributing thirty-one. So, just, because it says in addition, so, is that the thirty-one, one nine-nine point four-eight part of the one-five-one, or is it, so, or is it an extra? So, is the credit that you're getting from DESI, is it applied to the one-five-one, or is it, or are we looking at, I don't know, or is it more than that? Does that make sense?
We are paying one, I'm pretty sure we're paying the one-fifty-one.
Okay.
Because it's thirty...
Total cost.
Yeah, we are paying, because in the first year includes professional development that we're paying for, like, it's seven days of PD that we're paying on top of the days that the department's paying for.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to...
So, the total for the materials is one hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars and eight cents?
And PD, there's PD in there.
The materials and PD, it's one eighty-two and change.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that's over the seven years. And we're not paying for it at all upfront. So, that's not like, that's not hitting this year's budget line. So, that then gets broken out over seven years. Thirty, so, and the Department of Ed's paying the thirty-one, whatever that number is. And then, we, then, we pay over seven years, those numbers. So, it's a fixed cost that might go built into the budget. And this year, we pay a little bit more upfront, I forgot what the number is, it's like, it's whatever we had budgeted for the textbook in the, that we agreed in the budget. And then, next, in the years after, it's like nineteen and change.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, Ms. Games?
And just one other quick question. So, the DESI grant, was that just in one go? So, they give you the money, or they're spreading that out?
No, it's in one go.
It was in one go? Okay, all right.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions, discussion? Because of the sensitivity to timing for the discount for the materials, is my understanding, that's why I was asked for a potential vote tonight. So, if someone has a motion, I believe that's what they're looking for. Ms. Henderson?
I would like to make a motion to approve that the district enter into a seven-year contract with Carnegie Learning for a high school math solution, including textbooks, software, and other materials, and professional development services.
I would second that.
Discussion or questions? I just, one just one clarifying question, do we need to have the amount in that motion? I think I would prefer it.
Okay.
If we can actually put in...
Our cost?
...to prove the district's ability to professional development services, the total cost of this contract to the district is...
Yeah.
And then, in addition to these costs, the department for blah 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 is contributing to pay for the professional. I think if we add that right there into the motion, that would be better.
Would you like me to re-read it?
Yes, please.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve that the district enter into a seven-year contract with Carnegie Learning for a high school math solution, including textbooks, software, and other materials, and professional development services, to a total cost for this contract to the district of one hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty cents.
Over seven years.
Over seven, over seven years. In addition to these costs, the department for elementary and secondary education is contributing thirty-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty-eight cents to pay for some of the professional development costs.
And materials.
And materials.
Okay. So, the motion has been amended. Questions or discussion?
Do you have to have a second?
Oh, yeah, I need my second, sorry. On the amended motion, do I have a second on my amended motion?
I would second that.
Okay, thank you. And now, discussion and questions? Seeing none. And we'll call vote. Ms. Dowd?
Aye.
Ms. Tully?
Aye.
Ms. Games?
Aye.
Ms. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Henderson?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Great.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mark.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
A follow-up question, Mark. Obviously, you've been looking at this for a year regarding what our math scores have been, similar to language arts in the elementary. My question would be, this is a question now, I think.
Let him think about that.
Looking at next year, it's similar to saying, "Year one, we'll do math. Year two, we're gonna take care of history." What do you see in the next two years, not counting the one we're coming up on, with fairly major purpose to fill in major gaps that aren't present in the hands of kids right now in the way of text, in the five-day, in other words, Spanish and history, et cetera?
Yeah, so, I think there's a couple of areas. One would be English language arts at both the middle school and the high school level. It's more about examining the novels that we're using from a couple of levels. One, from a bigger level, we had this conversation during the workshop, you know, ensuring that students have grade-level-appropriate texts in front of them. It's hard to ensure that students are reading at grade level if we're not putting grade-level texts in front of them. So, auditing texts, the novels that we're putting in front of students at the middle and high school level to make sure that not, that they will give students an opportunity to read grade-level text. That would be the first part of that. And then, the second part is from, so, that's, and that's, as I mentioned during the workshop, that is an equity piece, right? And so, ensuring that students have opportunity in school to read grade-level text is an equity piece, that we're not leaving it to outside forces, that we, as a school district, are owning that. And then, the other equity perspective is then ensuring that we're examining our texts from, from perspective, that we're, that we're making sure that we're including broad perspective in what students, like, from a content perspective, in what students are engaging in. And then, I think the other piece is, and Scott and I have had some conversations around this, around, you know, looking at mathematics, again, at a K to seven range, and seeing, you know, what additional professional development we might need to support the resources that we have at the K to seven level. This, and I know you've talked about this, you know, with the investment that we made at K to seven, it was prior to my time, but making sure that we're getting the results from that investment. So, those would be the two priority areas that I see on the horizon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is review of Monomoy Regional School Committee remote participation slash policy. I was asked by the committee to reach out to our counsel from our last meeting on July 14th, and we've, I put in your packet the inquiry and the reply from Mark Terry, our counsel, our legal counsel. And so, at this point, I'm happy to open it up for questions or discussion, if anyone needs further clarification. The answer was, whatever rule it adopts applies to all meetings of the district, including both the school committee and all of its subcommittees. And I did send a reminder email out to folks, probably somewhere in between this, because it seemed to have been some confusion about our remote participation after we'd already taken the vote. So, I hope that was clarifying for folks. But, I welcome the discussion or conversation at this point, if anyone has any more clarifying questions that they need addressed. Ms. Games?
Yeah, I just have one clarifying question. So, in the notes, it says six to four, we voted. I think that's incorrect. If we did it on, I don't know if it was a one per person, or if we were doing the one whole half vote.
Was it five to four?
I think it was, okay, it depends on how we count it. So, if we're counting it based on the one and the half, it would have been a three-two.
And it might have been, it could have just been the, I mean, it's all the same.
Yeah, and then, if we were counting one person, which I think some of our votes are one person, then it would have been four to threes, if one was staying.
Leah, do you have that?
I've captured this, four i's, two three o's, and an extension.
So, four, three.
So, four, three.
So, four, three.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I just saw it.
Madam Chair?
No, that's, that's fine. Mr. Russell?
Just a clarification, Tina. I think it's my understanding that all total school committee votes as a committee, it's one or half vote.
Right.
Depending upon the village you live in. Depending upon the village you live in. All subcommittees, I think we discussed this four or five months ago. All subcommittees are on a whole one vote.
Right.
If there are four people, there are four votes.
Okay, yep, so thank you, Terry. Then the vote would have been a three-two. Yeah.
Because I think what I did, as I did a, when I calculated in my head, I did a two-one. I don't know why, but I think that's what I did.
I just wanted to clarify.
No, it's totally fine. No, thank you.
We both voted.
Bonus.
Yeah. There's so many people.
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Tully?
Yeah. Okay, so I think I'm a little confused based on the correspondence that I'm seeing between you and counsel, when I read in our remote participation policy, and then also the conversation that I've had with several MASC reps.
Yep.
When I, so I think, how about I share what I'm understanding and see if that tracks or doesn't track with what your understanding is based on the.
Yeah, whichever orders, it's fine.
So at our last meeting, we voted to adopt our remote participation policy that we have in.
To activate it, basically.
To activate it.
Yep.
Activate it.
Yep.
Right? So we have that in front of us. And in the second paragraph, it says.
Page two?
Well, let's, I guess, so filed BE one, two, three, four. Under remote participation.
Yep.
So it says, "The Open Meeting Law Regulations Governing Remote Participation, 940 CMR 2910, remain in effect," which is open meeting law.
Yep.
All of that. "Except where the governor's executive order specifically suspends certain requirements." So to me, that means we have activated this policy. Our policy acknowledges that we are abiding by open meeting law, except where, or that all the, all the regulations governing remote participation are in effect for, for open meeting law are in effect for remote participation, except where the governor's executive order specifically suspends certain requirements. So we're abiding by that. And the governor's, the executive order, which is now law, it suspends the requirement to have quorum be in-person until March 2023. So to me, this means that subcommittees can meet virtually and have their quorum virtually. And we have activated this policy in understanding that the governor's executive order eliminates some of the requirements.
Right, I understand where your confusion is. And the school committee as a unit can, does not have to follow the governor's executive order at this point. Even though there was a suspension, it's an option now, but we do not have to follow it. And once we vote to suspend or stop virtual participation, that is when we go back to the way we were pre-COVID. So that's what we voted on. And then, Liam, and then what happens is that we enacted the remote participation part of our policy.
This part.
Yes, this part.
Yep.
But you're, what you're doing is you're following, you're looking at the governor's executive order specifically suspends certain requirements. But I don't know that this policy, I think you guys are still updating it, but I'm not sure, and Tina may be able to better explain it, but what they're talking about does not apply. The governor's executive order specifically suspends certain requirements, but it does not apply when the, when the body decides to suspend virtual participation. So we follow the open meeting laws as written.
Yes, but our policy that we activated during our last meeting states that the open meeting law regulations governing remote participation remain in effect. Except where the governor's executive orders specifically suspends certain requirements. We have adopted, we have activated this policy.
Yep.
So to me, this means that we, we did not have a vote to say we are not going to follow the governor's executive order. I believe our vote, if we look in our minutes, it was, the motion, move to discontinue virtual participation for the school committee members at scheduled meetings and to follow the language of remote participation in policy filed BE. The language of remote participation in policy filed BE states that open meeting laws remain in effect, except where the governor's executive order specifically suspends certain requirements. MASC agrees, this is very clear, that because the policy was even updated and revised on November 5th, this, the way this is written allows subcommittees, basically, to have a virtual quorum.
I hear what you're saying, and I can answer the question, and I have the question, but I have about this much documentation that I've been going through over the last like four weeks. So if somebody else wants to talk while I look up your answer, I'm happy to. And Meredith or Tina, both of you had your hands up. Go ahead, Meredith.
So I just go to, so I hear what you're saying, Danielle. But I feel like the way that this is written, the first part that's on that first page on the bottom, is what happens when there is remote participation. But if you go to the next page, it talks about the adoption of the remote participation. And number one is that the regional school committee must by a simple majority vote to allow remote participation in accordance with that Attorney General policy. So that's what my understanding is. And then part of the conversation that we had at our last meeting was, is that, so that's, that's what I believe we did at the last meeting. We voted to discontinue remote participation as a school committee. But in our conversation, we talked about, is there flexibility for subcommittees? And what do we need to do to, to vote on that? I think that we would have to completely change our policy. And I don't know that that's what our committee wants to do. It might be, but I don't know that that's what we want to do. And I think that's why we had Jackie reach out to counsel, because we followed this adoption of remote participation by voting. And it says, then it says, really neat glasses. Participation may revoke that adoption in the same manner. So, so we voted a few years ago to adopt the remote participation. And then at our last school committee meeting, we voted to take it away and have in-person meetings. And so the big question that, in my mind, was whether or not we could separate subcommittees and the whole committee public meeting.
And Danielle, I also will reiterate that, because I can't, I must not have brought one of the emails with me, but, and we have other options. Mark, not Mark, sorry, hold on. I just lost my whole train of thought. Mark has reviewed our policy, sorry, that was what I was trying to come up with, our school committee policy. And that's what this was referenced on, because my request was what your request, what our request was, that we've enacted our policy and that this is what we've done. And so how does, how does the, how does the committee and subcommittee fall under that? And how does it work? So he's reviewed everything. So I think that if he felt that it didn't pertain, he would have mentioned that in his email. He would have said that, but he didn't. So unless he missed, unless he missed a point, but he was very thorough, I've asked him the question. I've said, I've said, "The committee's asked me to seek legal guidance on how this will impact at the subcommittee level. Does the committee's remote participation policy apply? Or can those meetings still be held entirely remotely?" Because I've said, "With the remote participation portion of this policy was utilized pre-COVID, but we wanted to be sure all members were aware. It was within our policy and available where it necessitates." Further, I said, "We enacted the remote participation on the guidelines of the policy." And he, his answer is, "It applies to all meetings of the district, including both the school committee and all of the subcommittees." So I can go back to him again and say, "Can you further clarify again? Can you review our policy again and verify again that what you meant was that the rule adopted applies to all meetings?" I'm happy to do that. But he's answered the question that was given.
Yeah, well, I think.
And review the policy.
Yeah, I understand that he, he was thorough in reviewing the policy. I think what, what is confusing is I'm hearing two different words. We're saying we voted to adopt and activate our remote participation policy. But then I'm hearing, I say, "We revoked the adoption of our remote participation policy at our last meeting." So I think our motion was actually confusing. Because when, when we say, or somebody says, "We activated our remote participation policy." I mean, MASC has, three people I've spoken with MASC have said, "If you activate your remote participation policy, and your remote participation policy states this, second paragraph right here."
Mm-hmm.
That means we are operating under open meeting law in accordance with the current laws as the governor has, or the, what's it called? The provisions, the extensions, all of that stuff. But that means we've, we are operating in this space right now. But what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing you saying, somebody else saying is, "Oh, no, we actually, we revoked our remote participation option." That's what Meredith just said.
Right, when, when we, when we, pre-COVID, we had a remote participation portion of our policy, this policy, that was in our policy. We never talked about it, we never used it, we never had anyone who needed to use it. When COVID happened, because I happened to be chair pre-COVID, and now I'm chair again, we had to, what, we, we didn't have, we didn't have to activate it, but we had to say, "Hey, guys, there's this remote participation already in here. So until the governor does something, we're going to activate this." And that's what we did. Right? So you have to follow these open meeting law, blah, 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 blah. Then the governor thankfully had his open meeting law guidelines and put everything out to make things a little bit more seamless, allowed us to do things with more flexibility. So you understand that?
Yeah.
Okay. So at our last meeting, what we did was say, "Okay, who wants to participate virtually? Who does not want to participate virtually?" The vote was, if you wanted to participate virtually, or you didn't want to participate virtually, but the motion also said, "And we will have a remote participation option." I don't have the verbiage in front of me, but, and there will be, that's the general gist of it, right? You either want.
Not our motion from last meeting.
Read, you can, yeah, you know what, Ms. Rogers, read the motion, that would be great.
Sure. Meredith Henderson moved to discontinue virtual participation for the school committee members at scheduled meetings and follow the language of the remote participation policy filed BE. The motion was seconded by Nancy.
Perfect.
So that's the remote participation that.
So that was.
That's lowering this policy.
So that was no more virtual meetings. We were no more, we are no longer meeting as a general, as a general committee virtually. But we activated the fact that there is still a remote participation option. So is that clear? That's what you just read.
I, am I able to speak?
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Rogers?
I still don't understand how that means that we're eliminating the remote participation because.
We're not eliminating remote participation.
So then we can use remote participation in subcommittees?
Remote participation at the committee level and the subcommittee level is allowed. No one said it wasn't. It's allowed, but you have to follow the guidelines for remote participation.
By what the governor's orders are, according to our policy.
Correct.
Which says that you can have a quorum remotely.
That's not how it was explained to me by the lawyer, which is, hence his answer. So.
I feel like with this.
I feel like we're mixing a lot. Making a mountain out of a molehill here.
I don't think this is a mountain out of a molehill. I think as evidenced by our last conversation and our vote, this is actually a really important issue to about half of us on the school committee, to be able to have clarity on whether or not we can have a virtual forum on our subcommittees.
I'm not going to argue about what's important and what's not.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Russell?
A suggestion, just to move us along.
Thank you.
Why don't, I don't even know if this discussion is moving towards a vote, but let's assume it's not.
It's not.
Why don't we give this until the next meeting and give the chair an opportunity to recollect, as well as you folks recollect? And contact that counsel again and see if he can also pair out what, what we're all saying and come to an understanding, even agreement.
I'm happy to do that, but I would want something in writing specifically on what you want me to ask this time, because I articulated exactly what the, what the committee asked, and he answered, so.
I would, I would volunteer and appreciate being able to be in an email communication with you and with town council about that, to make sure that we're forming, forming the questions.
I don't meet with town council.
What's that?
I don't meet with town council.
District council.
If it's allowed, I'm happy to do that. But typically, it's just council and chair.
Okay.
So, and I, and I honestly, that's my job. So it's a little insulting that someone feels they need to be involved in that conversation.
I'm sorry, I thought you just, I thought you just asked for clarification on.
No, I asked someone to write something now to give to me.
Oh, right now?
So that we know in public. So it's, so it's in public what it is you are asking for, again, so I can go back. Because quite honestly, folks are worried about coming to meetings and making time for this. This has taken me countless hours out of my day, out of my work time. And I don't appreciate not being respected for going to our attorney with a specific question from this committee. And now I have to go back and ask him again for more clarification. I mean, this is crazy, guys. This is about remote participation. Show up to the meetings. It's your job. You're an elected official. Unless you have a reason, you cannot be here. Report to the chair for an excuse to not be here. It's simple. It's so simple. It's not discrimination, it's not about your rights. We need to carry on. We ask our administration to be here, we ask our staff to be here, we ask our teachers to be here. Step up. I'm done. This is ridiculous. A waste of my time, a waste of everyone's time. That's why everyone's presentations were ahead of this conversation tonight. I don't need them standing here waiting for all of you to debate over something so senseless. Ms. Games?
Thank you. So I'm just going to make a request, and I, we can't really be on our phones during a meeting, but, and maybe if Joy or Leah, I, I would, I think it might help, I had, if we had an exact wording of the extension to March 31, 2023. Because my understanding, it's not a law, I mean, it's not a law, it's an option based on what I understood. It's not an option, it's a mandate, and then the school committees get to decide. That was a conversation I had at a MASC leadership retreat in mid-July. Because several school committees had this conversation, and my understanding of it was, some school committees decided to stay remote, others decided to go fully in-person, others had a hybrid. So my understanding of it, and again, and I don't want to pull my job, job into this, but my understanding of it, it's not a law, it's an option and not a mandate. So it's up to us to decide, is my understanding of it. And having said that, I mean, I can certainly, if I'm just being really fair, I can certainly understand where the confusion, as I, as I read this, I can see maybe where Danielle is confused, or me, or any of us, really. It says, it does say, "Except where the governor's executive order specifically suspends." So it might help to get the exact wording of the extension to March 31. I don't have it, unfortunately, I'd have to get on my phone, and I don't think we should do that during a meeting.
Thank you for that. And I'm fine doing that, and that's what I'm saying, is I need clarification. If you don't feel what I questioned on behalf, what I, what I inquired about on behalf of the committee the first time, please, I will write it out, ask me your specific question. I will ask counsel. Furthermore, our vice chair is on all correspondence with our council. So if there's any question about my integrity as a chair in doing my job, you may also address it to the vice chair, who is also involved in these conversations. I will not ever do this on my own, for my own protection. Thank you. If someone has something to write out, that would be enough at this point. Ms. Tully?
I just want to say, I'm sorry that you're feeling disrespected, that was not my intention at all whatsoever. The purpose of this conversation tonight was to have clear, to have clarity. Recommendation and suggestion I was going to put forth, was that according to MASC and the people that I spoke with, is that it can be up to subcommittees to make the decision as well. And so I want. And so I wanted to put that out there as an option for us to potentially consider, that the decision be left to subcommittees, whether or not they would like to operate in accordance with the governor's extension of requiring an in-person quorum to allow virtual participation at subcommittees. I wanted to clarify that it, I'm taken aback by the level of intensity and suggestion that we are not taking our jobs seriously or committed to do this work. We have been meeting, the majority of us in person, since we made that decision about a year ago. And this is specifically related to subcommittees. And so I'm just really confused by the intensity that this conversation has been met with.
One day you will be chair, and you will understand, I assure you. Five minutes ago, I asked you for that simple answer, and you continued on. So I ask again, does someone have a directive for me to go back to the attorney with, with our vice chair?
Uh, Jackie, I have.
Missed out. Sorry, I didn't see your hand.
Yes, um, I feel terrible that, that people are questioning you. I, I mean, I personally, at the last meeting, or at the meeting we voted on this, I think you could tell that I didn't know what I was doing. I was, couldn't figure out a lot of things. And you said, did I mean no, did I mean yeah, did I abstain? And I couldn't figure out in time a lot of this. So I didn't, I just went with something. But I just didn't understand all of the information about this. So I think it would be really helpful not at all to question you or anything about Meredith, any of that. It's just that to have something written out and have that answered, there may be follow-up questions to that. At least for me, I always have, not always, but I often have follow-up questions. And it just might be easier for you and everybody to have the attorney there to answer various questions rather than be accused as a messenger, because that's not right.
Thank you, Sharon. I don't need anyone's apologies. I am just expressing probably the aggravation over the last three weeks of trying to sort this out over something that is miniscule compared to our job and our duties as a school committee. So I am happy to go back to the lawyer and ask another question, or the same question I asked before, for more clarity. Hopefully, what he comes back with is clear enough. Um, I won't know that till the next meeting. Um, but again, I'm happy for clarifying questions. But what I don't want is accusations that I either didn't ask the right question or that we had a motion that was not, that was not clear. Because there are members of the committee that were very clear about what the motion was and what we voted on because we were moving forward that way. So if there were questions about whether we were still supposed to be remote or not, it should have come to the chair. One of my main issues was that we were having remotes, people were participating in meetings remotely. And we were no longer supposed to be remote. Because I was supposed to be asking the lawyer for the committee the question if that was applicable to subcommittees. So that's frustrating as a chair. So all I need is specification of what someone would like me to ask the lawyer. That is my job, that is what I will do. Ms. Henderson.
So I, I believe that our meetings here are full committee meetings. We did all agree that in-person is the way that we want to go. And the big question was, does, do subcommittees have the flexibility to be remote if they would like to? And I know that you asked that question, but I think maybe if we ask it again and specifically ask, specifically about subcommittees. Um, because the, the answer was that what you do for your whole committee, you do for your subcommittee. That was the answer from the attorney. So, but as a school committee, is there, is there a way for us to have that flexibility? I think is what we're looking for.
Yes. Madam Chair.
Um, thank you, Ms. Games.
Two things. First of all, it looks like maybe Joy found the wording, perhaps?
Yes, I was trying to read it.
Okay. Um, and then, or perhaps if you see, if you want to read that. Because I also do have a question, and I'm just going to speak, if you don't mind, on behalf of Policy, because Policy has a meeting scheduled on June, uh, June, gosh, I'll jump back to June. The 29th. So I think probably some of the urgency that might be, what do we do with that meeting? Are we going to be in person? And then I've got a whole slew of questions.
I'm aware.
Based on what's going to happen if it's a hybrid. So I'll hold those questions. If you want to read something, I don't know.
Yeah, I can read it. It says, Governor Baker signed, on July 16, 2022, Governor Baker signed into law an act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March 31 of 2023. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote, sorry, adequate alternative access to remote meetings. The act does not make any new changes to the open meeting law other than extending the expiration date of the temporary provisions regarding remote meetings from July 15 to March 31.
Okay. So if I can just, I heard the word allows, which is what my understanding is, it allows. So it's not a mandate, it doesn't say that you have to do this, so it allows.
Yep.
Um, and which would bring it back to our committee to make a decision. That's how I hear it, that's how I've understood it. Um, so I'll make that comment. And then.
Yep.
I do have questions about the Policy Subcommittee. So I don't know if anybody wants to weigh in on what they heard.
Ms. Henderson.
So I, I think, I think one of our big next steps, which I do think we sort of informally agreed upon at our last meeting, was that the Policy Subcommittee does need to revisit this. And, you know, as I keep rereading this over and over, um, I think there are a lot of parts to it. And then when we have the governor's act in our head too, that makes it a little bit more confusing. Um, but I think that on the back page, that procedures for remote participation is what we have adopted as a, prior to COVID. So I wonder if that's kind of a place that the subcommittee starts? Um, and really drilling back to take out the language from the extension from the governor to back to what it was previously to allow for remote participation? And then see if that is how our committee wants to move forward. I think that we have both in here. I know we have both in here.
I have one, I don't know if this will be clarifying more than what I already had here, but I can try. Um, prior to our meeting, anticipating the extension, I had reached out to counsel with Mary just to kind of get a grip on understanding what was going to happen and the impact, so that I could better answer questions for the committee at our meeting. Um, one of the clarifying questions, let me see if I can find it again. The broader question I had for him, he said, if the school committee votes to discontinue remote participation, everyone would have to meet in person as they did prior to the pandemic. The exception, as noted, is if the school committee voted to allow for remote participation by a member when physical attendance would be unreasonably difficult. That would be the remote participation part of the policy, which we did. As the, and then he went on to talk about, as the chair, there are protocols you'll need to follow under the pre-pandemic remote participation rules. Um, the person running the meeting, you or the designated and/or quorum must be present in person, and the remote members must be audible to everyone else. No cell phones in areas of poor reception because it interferes with the obligation to take accurate minutes. Um, second, prior to a meeting, a remote member must advise the chair or the person running the meeting that they wish to participate remotely. And the reason for doing so, at the beginning of the meeting, the chair must announce the name of the person. That was one of the big pieces that was missing from the subcommittee meetings that were being held partially remotely. Um, oh, uh, blah, blah, blah. At the beginning of the meeting, the chair must announce the name of the person participating remotely, which must be recorded in the minutes. Um, third, when a member is participating remotely, all votes must be by roll call. And then it went on to talk about how you function in executive session. Um, do, 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 what did I just say? Uh, that was just allowing someone else to be present, like if I'm not there, someone else to run the meeting. The first part of that just reiterates what he then confirmed after we took the vote. So what I'm thinking we need to do is I'm going to send him the motion that we voted on and specifically say, can you refer back to our remote participation policy? And see if there's a contradiction regarding the open meeting law, remote participation in reference to the governor's executive order?
Yes, that sounds good.
Is that what the clarification needs to be? Because it seems like that's what's confusing folks, is that the policy still references the governor's executive order. And how does that apply once we voted not to participate virtually, but only with the remote participation option? But please clarify if that's not what you guys want.
I think for me, it's more of a bottom line is like, may we allow subcommittees to choose to meet virtually or have a virtual quorum in accordance with the governor's extension of suspending certain requirements of open meeting law?
So my interpretation at this point, based on his response and my multiple correspondences, the answer is, the vote we adopted applies to all meetings of the district, including the school committee and of the subcommittees. However, there is a remote participation option in which you just have to talk to the chair before for reporting the unreasonable, whatever it is, that you have to participate remotely. I can further get clarification on if a quorum needs to be met. So let's say there's four of you and two of you can't be there, or three can't be there. Three are going to be remote and one present. That also raises a lot of questions on whose responsibility is it for the technology for these subcommittees, it becomes quite daunting. So there's a lot of, a lot more moving pieces if we're going to be not virtual for our regular scheduled meetings, but then we are going to be for our subcommittees. So there's a lot of other questions we're going to have if, if we move forward with some people wanting to have remote participation, which is going to be a whole other chapter. Yeah.
I think, um, I mean, I think it's clear from the subcommittees, from the makeup of the subcommittees, that it's specifically the Policy Subcommittee that is wanting to have the ability to have a virtual quorum. And so I think maybe it's even more of a, a simpler bottom line is, could even, so, in light of our recent vote and our last motion, can we still, by consensus, allow a subcommittee to make that choice for themselves?
No. We've already voted, we're under the vote that we are no longer participating virtually. We have a remote participation option in our policy that can be activated if necessary. And I can go back to the legal counsel to clarify that again. And I can't, I guess, I can't say one committee can do it. And then, like, like if it was just like, it's only the subcommittee that wants to be meeting remotely. I can't do that. That's not fair. It has to be across the board, I can't discriminate against, everyone has to follow the same rules and regulations. Um, so, and I'm, what I'm reading is that it's all the same. So there's no delineation between a subcommittee and the committee. They're all the same. Um, the needs of the subcommittees may warrant differently than a whole committee, but the way they function and run is the same, much like the structure of a subcommittee. You have a chair, you take minutes, you report out, things like that. So at this time, I have to go back to counsel and get clarification. And until then, as my email previously said, we function in person. Ms. Games.
Yeah, and I don't mean to keep dragging this out, but first of all, it's important. So if, so if we're going to proceed this way, if an individual requests remote participation that is approved by the chair, who is responsible? I really have an issue with this, I'm going to be honest with you. I think whatever way we move and whatever decision is made, I think it either has to be an all or none. I'm not a fan of the hybrid for the subcommittees because I think it puts responsibility on a volunteer school committee member to set up the techno, do whatever. And so you've got to manage technology, manage the meeting, make sure the person's heard. I don't think that's fair. So my personal thought, if we're going to change this or whatever, it needs to either be all or none. Because I just, I don't know how we're going to handle subcommittees. Um, am I making sense?
Yep. Uh, Ms. Henderson.
So you mean that if we were to give this option, it would either have to be, everyone in this, the whole subcommittee would be virtual or?
That's what I'm saying. Because just because I'm anticipating, I'm, yeah, I'm just anticipating, who gets to decide what the remote option is? I mean, I guess I'm just foreseeing some challenges. And who gets to decide, are we just going to FaceTime? Is somebody going to speak into the phone? Is somebody bringing their laptop? It's, I just think it's, it's a lot to ask of a volunteer to be in charge of the technology. Because it's like taking minutes, you want to be able to participate in the meeting. But if you're going to be managing technology and somebody hasn't heard, you got to repeat things back and, or you've lost a connection or whatever. Um, I just ask that we, whatever we decide, that it be all or none. Because it, I don't.
Well, similarly to Policy, when you're all in a room, you're all looking at the policy, editing the policy. But if you have one person that's remote, it's not on a screen like we used to do and edit the doc on a screen.
Right.
So that's, that's a component. I'm also researching and going through counsel with how to do executive session and what that's going to look like. So there's lots of moving pieces that I'm working on. Um, so, let me just.
And if I can make one more comment, because Sharon gave us an excellent example earlier tonight as to what happens when you haven't clearly heard what the motion is and you think it's something and you vote a certain way based on what you thought you heard. So she gave us a really good example. And so I foresee this coming up in subcommittees if somebody had thought they heard something and we agreed to send something forward and then, yeah. So I think, I just want to run efficient meetings. I'm all about, it was just, whatever way we can run the most efficient meeting and do our work is what I'm all about.
Okay. So I'm going to go back to counsel. I am going to review our remote participation policy, specifically in reference to the extension as of 3/31. The verbiage in the first, let's stick to the second paragraph about the governor's executive order specifically suspending certain requirements, how that applies and how it applies to the vote that we took. And if the vote that we, maybe a clear definition of what that, what that vote we took means. Sound good? Ms. Henderson.
And if it, because now that I read it over and over, I see where there can be gray, right? So if we potentially need to have, revisit the motion? If we, I don't, not tonight.
Yeah, no, not tonight, thank you.
Not tonight.
Ms. Games.
One more question, and I don't mean to speak for Policy, but I am a little concerned because we, I know for Policy, we've got a timeline for something that Melissa has to do. So I'm really concerned about what's going to happen with this Policy meeting. Um, anyway, Melissa looks like she's coming up to say something.
Yeah. Yeah.
Let's go wire up the student services.
Hi.
Just because of timelines, the meeting has to be posted tomorrow.
That's fine.
With that posting, it has to have location.
I have a location for us.
So.
I'll communicate that out to Leah, make sure.
That's.
Yep. Yep. So Sharon Bearden holds up the posting. We're still meeting in person, but that's what it is, so.
And one other quick thing. Thank you for that piece. The other piece is if somebody within the Policy Subcommittee, because this is our most urgent one, because we have a meeting coming up, if somebody. Do we get to decide what that looks like and who is responsible for it?
I will get an answer for that.
Okay, thank you.
What is the date of your meeting?
It's the 29th, so it'll be Monday at 6:30, Monday at 6:30.
As in, not tomorrow, not Friday, but Monday?
Yep.
Great. I will see if Mark can turn that around. Policy sub-technology question. Okay. Anything else? Sharon, is your hand up or is that from before? Oh, you're muted.
So I am scared of the policy subcommittee Monday, which I want to be at remotely. If, what was the one for tomorrow?
I don't know what one tomorrow.
I don't know of a meeting tomorrow, Sharon.
Oh, that's it, Melissa said, or somebody said.
Oh, no, it just has to be posted by tomorrow, Sharon. Maybe that's what you heard?
Yes, okay, that's, that's great. Thank you.
Yep. Ms. Games?
I'm sorry. No, I just, I just want to make it clear that, yes, we're going to post it tomorrow, but we're still making a decision on what the remote looks like. So I want to be very clear about that. Does that make sense, what I just said?
Who's making a decision? I'm, you?
Well, with policy, okay, so we made a decision, we're going to post the meeting. We have a physical location.
Correct.
As far as the remote participation piece.
Correct.
It sounds that we, we need to know what that looks like. I don't want anybody to have an expectation that something is going to happen.
If someone has a request to participate remotely, they will contact the chair. If someone contacts, no, contact me, the chair of the committee.
Okay.
If someone does get acceptance for remote participation, I will then figure out what, what we can do for technology and who that falls on.
Thank you.
For that meeting. And then going forward, I will hopefully from that have a better answer and then guidance going forward on what that would look like if it were to have to look like something. So I will, if someone needs remote participation for your policy subcommittee meeting on 8/29, they need to contact me, the chair, within 24 to 48 hours before the meeting. And then I can figure out the technology piece if necessary or needed.
Okay.
Okay? In the meantime, all meetings are in person until further notice, except if someone needs remote participation and they can contact the chair, me. Clear? District safety crisis trainings. Dr. Carpenter?
Trying to be brief here, but I explained to the school committee last spring that, you know, after our two bomb threats and the tragedy that happened in Yobaldi, Texas, that, you know, we frequently have our crisis team that meets after each event locally and, after events that happen nationally, just to look at what we do here as a district and talk about ways that we can improve and be better. One of the things that we had discussed as a crisis team is that we would update some of our ways that we communicate evacuation to our staff and students, in particular how we communicate those worst-case scenarios that, you know, that in the past, you know, may have been called lockdowns, but what we have gone towards a run high fight. So we updated the wording that appears in our crisis manuals that are in each classroom setting, you know, the, the green sheet and the, the yellow sheet were updated to reflect that, the discussions we held. We moved back to the crisis team last Tuesday and met at the Harvard Elementary Professional Library to, to go over the changes that we made in the documents so we can get them posted. And we had also talked last spring about wanting to get a, a, a very, you know, sort of focused time spent early on in the school year, just making sure that all staff and all students were familiar with, with our crisis plans. So, you know, so what we have discussed is having essentially a safety week of the week of September 19th, where we would have a parent university that Monday evening to discuss with parents what we're going over with students, including our evacuation, you know, protocols and other, other safety protocols, that each school in the district would have public safety come in and, and train their staff and work with, and work with their students and make sure that everybody understands if we have to dump the building for a fire alarm, this is what we do in the worst-case scenario. If we have to go into that one-high-fight protocols, this is what we do as a school. The other thing that we have been discussing with the, with the crisis team for, for a while now is how to improve our internal communications and also come up with the, use a tool that would allow us to better communicate internally and externally. So, you know, one of the, you can imagine, one of the most challenging aspects of any big crisis where you have to evacuate a building is that once you've evacuated, if the school day's going to end, now it's reuniting all the children with their parents and making sure that we're counting for everybody when they're outside the building and that when they've been reunited with the parent. There is a technology out there called Crisis Go that a number of school districts, including ones locally, have been using. So we have contracted with Crisis Go to begin using this, this school year. So I have, Jim can just do a quick little blurb on what Crisis Go is. You know, so Jim had, and Holly Thing, who is our data person, is, have been working behind the scenes to get this up and running. You can imagine that, you know, Jim, you know, Jim and Holly are working through, you know, aligning our system. So essentially, you know, teachers on their cellphones could have their class list for that moment in time so that they can go and have all of the information and be able to communicate seamlessly from wherever we are. And even if, you know, even if part of the school is in one location and part of the school is in another location, that administrators and public safety can account, use this tool to account for everybody. So Jim, why don't you just walk us through Crisis Go quickly?
Thanks. Jim Birchfield, I'm the Director of Instructional Technology. And I'm just going to give you a quick overview of Crisis Go, give you a sense of what it looks like. They have a nice little 60-second video here that will just give you a sense of, like, kind of what happens when you're using the thing. Then I'll just also briefly cover just the implementation of the system and what we're doing, all the steps that are, like, being put in place to make this work.
No one is ever ready for an emergency. We prepare in advance and adapt to the situation, but we never know when an emergency will strike or how exactly it would feel when we need to respond to a crisis. If the unimaginable does happen, you don't want to scramble just to get your resources and protocols in order. Emergencies don't knock, so you always need your safety at arm's reach. Having safety at hand means that you are always connected to an emergency communication network. You can instantly be warned of danger and you will have all of your emergency protocols and resources right at your fingertips. Crisis Go knows that emergencies don't RSVP, which is why we built a comprehensive safety platform to make sure that safety is always accessible. Everything you need from the start of an emergency to its resolution. No one is ever ready for an emergency. We prepare in advance.
So that's, basically gives you a sense that it's, it's an app that's on a phone, it's on a computer, we can install it just about anywhere. And so everybody will have access, that includes staff, students, parents, anybody that's connected to our system and has opted into it, they'll be able to access that app and then be a part of any kind of alert that goes out. So the, the big idea here is that we're trying to engage everybody in the safety process so that it's not just this sort of isolated situation where, you know, information's happening in silos and only certain people are getting the information and able to give it to others. This is a way of trying to, like, create an umbrella that connects to everybody in the district, basically. So not just the teachers, not just the admin, but the students and the parents as well. So I think that's, that's a huge leap for us in terms of communicating during a crisis. And I think this platform is, is something that will give us that ability. So that's, that's a huge piece, it's just, including everybody. And let's see what else. Yeah, that's that. And then the emergency protective actions is really just the implementation plan. So we're already into this implementation. And at this point, I've already worked with the company in terms of the IT piece of it, so they needed to have certain things in place on our side, on the network side. We've got that going. Holly Thing is working as well to link Aspen with the system. So everybody that's in Aspen, you know, whether it's students, parents, teachers, anybody that's got contact information in Aspen is now going to sync with Crisis Go. And then when they install the app on their device, it could be on one, it could be on your cellphone, let's say, you'll be connected and if there's an emergency, an alert will be sent out to you, to your phone. So you'll be notified immediately if something's going on. Yeah, that's, thanks. So when we're done with the implementation, these are the bulleted items here, basically just what is going to be available to us. So they'll have drills, like regular drill schedules, like the way we do a fire drill. We could do like an emergency alert drill. It'll set up an audible alert, so it's kind of like a, a siren will go off on your phone. It's kind of like a, almost like an amber alert or a tornado alert. Like sudden, your, your phone or your device will kind of light up and have this audible sound coming out of it that will let you know if something's going on. We're going to be going over protocol checklists, we're going to train the staff, train the, basically, we'll have the staff training during that week in September. And then, yeah, at, at the end of the drills, we'll send out a report, we can kind of do an assessment of how the drills went. So there's a lot of data that's built into the system that we'll be able to take a look at after we, we run a drill or if there is an emergency. And then there's going to be a customizable info guide, it's basically a website that will connect to our Mongol website where teachers and parents, anybody can go and get the information on, on the Crisis Go system. So it's kind of like a nice one-stop shop to get information. And then these are all the different devices that we can deploy the app on. See, so also, I'm sure that most people will spend it on a smartphone, but we'll also push it out to all of the devices in schools, so all Chromebooks, teacher laptops, workstations, basically any device that's on our network in the school system will also have the app installed. That way it's, no matter kind of where you are, whether you're somewhere with just your phone or if you're at your desk or wherever you are, if something does happen, you're pretty much bound to get an alert, you know, one way or another. So that's, that's a good thing. And then this is project timeline. We've already done the IT and Aspen configuration. I believe Holly just got some confirmation on that today, that Aspen is syncing with the system. So all that information's already there. And then the staff train's coming up, as Scott mentioned. And then we're live after that. That's it.
Thank you, Jim.
So to kind of take this in terms of my ask, to train staff, it takes time and we need to go and, you know, if, if safety's important, we need to go and take time. So, you know, so one of the things that I've asked each principal to do is during that safety week is, you know, sort of allocate time, you know, within your schedule rearrange to go and have a time where, you know, where public safety and, and they've met with police and fire in each of their towns, so that police and fire are going to be coming in to do a joint presentation with the, you know, with the, with school level staff on evacuation and safety. But we also need to set up time in that week to spend time training staff on how to use Crisis Go. So what I would like to do is ask for the school committee to vote and have the Friday of that week be a true half-day. At the moment, the Friday of that week is a full day, but if we want to have time and give staff the time to go be trained in how to use Crisis Go and, you know, to practice using Crisis Go, along with, you know, we, I don't think it's going to take a full half-day to get them all trained in that, but there are also a number of other safety-related topics that we can go and have for staff. For instance, we've talked about doing a suicide prevention conversation with staff and a training of, again, it's, it's one of these mandated trainings that the state says you should be doing each year, but I think it would allow us to do a really good in-person, you know, type of training on a, a convocation. A week from now, we'll actually be doing bullying prevention training with staff. Again, it's, you know, we're going to sort of start the year as we come back to more business as usual, where we're meeting together in person, you know, to really emphasize and have the safety emphasis upfront in the school year. So my ask is that we allocate some time to go, you know, successfully launch this, you know, this crisis tool with our staff and, you know, and then presumably then we can start the communication out with the staff on, here's when, here's when the training will be, and we would incorporate that into the parent university conversation that's happening on Monday of that week.
Ms. Anderson?
So I'm sure the answer is yes, but the police and fire are on board with this. They know about it, they understand it, they're, so they're in full communication with this app.
So this is, so our crisis, our district crisis team.
Yep.
Is comprised of police and fire from both towns and, you know, school administrators and school personnel from both towns. So, so this is sort of the, you know, we've been discussing, you know, we've been discussing this concept for quite some time, but also discussing, you know, the safety trainings that would be put in place at each, at each school and, you know, so that all students in the district will be getting trained along with all staff. You know, so all of the building principals who have already scheduled this with police and fire in each town.
Just one more question. And it's sophisticated enough that kids won't be able to just set it off?
That's a, that's a good question.
You know, it's, it's on their phone and whatnot.
Yeah, it's, it's, they.
I don't know if the questions go up.
...bullying incidents through the system, but they will get the alerts if there's an alert, but they can't just like, it's not, they can't like pull the fire alarm.
Okay. Perfect. How's that?
So they, they thought about that one, yeah.
Good.
If, if, what you could imagine.
I'm losing my head.
Worst-case scenario, information's key to everybody, you know, so, you know, so you have the ability using the app to go and say, you know, there, you know, there's an armed person in the library. And, and if you're able to push that out through the system, it helps people who aren't in the library make better decisions as to what they should be doing for their own sake.
Don, do you want to go first?
Sure. Just, would you see this as being something that would have done happen annually, like in the beginning of the school year, kind of coming out strong with the safety focus and having this be a training that's reiterated every year?
Well, we, we do, we, I mean, there's a huge list of, you know, mandated trainings that. Well, we do, we, I mean, there's a huge list of mandated trainings that we push out early in the year. I think, I think there's going to be a little more need to get everybody up to speed. And then you could imagine that once everybody's up to speed, then it becomes, you know, in subsequent years, there's parts of onboarding. But then I think the way, the way I would imagine Crisis Go, once it's up and operational, is we actually have to have evacuations per se all early in the year. We have to prac, you know, do practices, but it becomes, the app becomes part, you know, part of that exercise. So, you know, so you would practice using it while you're practicing the evacuations.
I just had a question. Mary was talking about the kids having access to it, but so they will get an alert on their individual mobile device? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so different scenarios, they could be in the classroom on their Chromebook and it will show up on that. It'll show up on their cellphone if they have the app on that.
But it's not relying on them having their mobile device on them to know about the emergency?
Well, no, I, well, I mean.
It would come over in P F two.
You know what I mean? Like it's not like, well, I didn't have my phone on me, so I didn't know there was a, there was a dumb man in the library. Like there's still going to be protocol that a teacher's going to be, you know, helping us. And I know some kids during the last one, like, they're like, I left my phone in my backpack and we all had to go to the field and then I didn't know where to go because they didn't have access to their phones. Not that they would have for this, but if that was a source that they would use to know, okay, where am I supposed to go? Am I supposed to go to this field or that field? They don't have their mobile device, if somebody will, but it's not totally reliant on them having that device with them.
Correct.
Perfect, thank you. Ms. Henderson.
And with the new policy that we have seen about today, they're going to have their cellphones with them.
The new cellphone policy.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah. That's what I, that's what made me think about it. And I was like, okay, well now, now we're taking their phones away, so, in certain circumstances, so it, there's got to be something else that, it's an added bonus that they'll get it on their phone. Great. Okay, and Ms. Henderson?
May I make a motion?
Um, yeah, there are no more questions or discussions? Sharon, did we lose you?
No, I'm still here.
Oh, you're, you're, you need to turn your, um, your, your phone, your camera on, thank you for the word.
My camera turned on?
Nope.
I must, I must have touched something, sorry. Here we go.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, Ms. Games?
Yeah, just a little logistical question. So the calendar, because I guess we have to make a change to the calendar if we agree to this. And has the, has the calendar been sent out to the student body already? So there'll be a, an update?
Right, and, and we'd have to communicate out to families, you know, so, you know, some of the urgency why I'm saying please don't wait two weeks before we do this is, I'd like to both communicate with staff, but also let families know to prepare for, you know, for the September 23rd on, you know, it would be a half day and why. And I, and I do think families will strongly appreciate and understand the why, but I want to get out, you know, get out in front of this.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Ms. Games. Uh, Ms. Henderson?
I would like to make a motion to adjust the 2022-2023 calendar to reflect a half day for students on September 23rd, twenty, Friday, September 23rd, 2022, in order for staff to have a district state, district safety crisis training, which will include a new app we will use, Crisis Go.
Second?
Second.
Um, okay. Roll call. Ms. Stout?
Aye.
Ms. Tully?
Aye.
Ms. Games?
Aye.
Ms. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Mrs. Henderson?
Aye.
And the chair is an aye. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Carpenter, thank you, Jim. Oh, actually, I have a question, but that's okay, I think Scott can answer it. Will parents have access to this notification as well? Like will we get something in our email or?
So, so the answer is theoretically yes, and I think it's a little abstract until we get it fully, yeah, so, so we haven't, you know, we haven't been fully trained on it, but I know in other districts, parents do have, have access to it.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, and first reading of the 2022-2023 School Committee Goals, Ms. Henderson will present.
So I thought that for our open meeting, I would just share the goals and not go through all of the action steps, and then we can begin our discussion if that's okay with everyone. All right, so we, in our workshop, we determined five goals for our school committee for the 2022-2023 school year. The first goal is that the school committee will understand the impact of housing affordability and regional inflation and how it is impacting our families and our staff. The second goal is that we will prepare a red line document for the annual town meeting, meetings in the spring of 2023, which is a continuation of last year's adjustment to the regional agreement. That should be part of the goal. The third goal is that the school committee will continue to support equity and diversity work within our district. The fourth goal is to support a district-wide curriculum audit. And the fifth goal is to develop the portrait of a graduate process with administration. So this is our first reading. Any discussion, questions? I guess that was your line.
Uh, Ms. Tully? I just have a suggestion for a slight wordsmithing on the first goal.
Yep.
To read, the Montgomery Regional School Committee will understand how housing affordability and regional inflation is impacting district families and staff.
Okay.
District families and staff.
Eliminate one impact?
Yeah.
No.
Um, and Meredith, you had a second edit.
I did, but red line, we just said red line document, but I think we could add regional agreement there.
That's under action step, goal two?
Yes. It's an action step, we could just leave it.
Okay. Um, and I just had a clarifying question. I know that from the movement of Carla Blanchard from curriculum director when we first regionalized to mark, one of Mark's, like, his major goal as curriculum director, as it should be, but has really done a diligent job at doing a district-wide curriculum audit. Not only is it his job, but specifically that's what he's kind of honing in on. So I just was wondering if there was more specification for this goal because the action steps kind of reflect, the action steps do reflect what is already happening. We do receive updates and administrative presentations regarding process and financial implications, and the committee receives ongoing reports from administration with status updates. So I wasn't sure what the thought process was behind this, because it's already happening in his job and we are already, those two action steps are already happening, so I wasn't sure if there is more we could add or something more specific we could add. Ms. Henderson?
So I'm going to try, but then if it's okay with you, I might ask Mr. Smith to come up. I believe we had a long conversation about this in the workshop, and it's more of a kind of a broader look at the whole district's curriculum, K to, pre-K to 12. In, right now, although yes, he's, the whole staff is working hard to create standard-based curriculum, et cetera, et cetera. It's giving a, right now, it's more specific to, you know, the ELA curriculum, the math curriculum in the high school, and speaking with building-based administration, where my understanding of the curriculum, district-wide curriculum audit was to think of it from pre-K to grade 12 and think about where are the gaps across the district. So it's kind of a bigger lens than the great work that's already happening.
Yeah, I, I think that that's the lens that his job entails, is pre-K through K, through 12. So I guess maybe the action steps would be a better, would be a place where we could specify more directives with a timeline, if that's what the committee's looking for, because what the two action steps are is what's already happening. So we, we, in essence, have completed this goal, in my opinion. We do it every year. So I'm just thinking, more specifically, like timelines, and let's say we want pre-K through two, we want to do a full review of that before, I don't know what's peaceful, December or October. And what do we want to see? Like what is it we need for measurable outcomes or identifying what the curriculum is and what the history is and where we are now and where we're going with it? That would be more of a directive that I would look at these active action steps for. So, Ms. Tully?
I wanted to add, I think the word comprehensive is what comes to mind when we were talking about the, a very comprehensive curriculum audit that is beyond the scope of what the current capacity of administration has to do. So in our action step of supporting that, that, we have an understanding that that infers there's a budgetary implication for supporting that comprehensive district-wide curriculum. And I think Mark could speak a little bit more to that. And that's part of why our action steps were around, uh, process and financial implications would be to bring on additional support for that comprehensive curriculum audit.
So I actually think if you added comprehensive, so supportive district-wide comprehensive curriculum audit, that that would be helpful because it actually makes it look different than what my inter, not having been able to be at the meeting, that's how I interpreted it. So had it been comprehensive, I probably would have looked at it a little bit differently because with that lens, it's like, okay, comprehensive is really picking at a, you know, whatever. So maybe we add comprehensive curriculum audit, but I still would go back to the action steps and maybe put in some type of framework for those with, with some type of timeline and structure from pre-K to, to, you know, 12, we're talking about a lot in a lot of topics and subjects. So I think it needs a little bit more, my opinion would be, it would need a little more framework in there, but, Ms., well, do you want to go? Do you want me to have Ms. Games go and then? Ms. Games?
Yeah, I mean, I think that word comprehensive is a good one, because I had written down, based on what Mark shared with us at the workshop, is he was looking for our support and taking a proactive approach versus reactive, because Mark shared some examples about how the curriculum audit is more, like if something happens out in the society, we're having to adjust. And he was looking to want to take a more proactive approach, and that's what I wrote down. But comprehensive certainly grabs it, but we could also expand it to say supportive comprehensive district-wide curriculum audit that takes a proactive approach, you know, just to be more clear, if you wanted to.
I like that that takes a proactive approach, but also what I liked you say is you're mentioning Mark, you know, his position within the goal, and perhaps one of the action steps is supporting that position and maybe something specific, like supporting him and what his, what his directive was to us, I could use more of this from my school committee. So maybe one of our action steps is, in fact, what he said, like support Mark as the curriculum director, blah, 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 in, you know, what you said.
Right.
I can't, I can't right now.
Proactive approach versus a reactive approach. But Mark can speak certainly, but he gave us a couple of good examples.
Right, yeah. Ms. Tully?
And, and building off of that, one of the things that we circled back to during our workshop was the conversation that came up during budget conversations around the potential position for an assistant director of curriculum, or I'm forgetting the appropriate title, but, you know, that that could be another way that the district would support or the school committee would support the comprehensive curriculum audit would be by when budget cycle comes around, understanding that that might be a step that aligns with that support that we're stating.
Um, it also, from tonight's conversation regarding the math curriculum, it looks like we may, we should refresh ourselves on the policy around curriculum. And maybe that should be one of the action steps as well. Would you like to join us for a minute?
Happy to. Mark Smith, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. So just to, for the public, for the conversation we had at the workshop, essentially to try to paraphrase the conversations that we had, so if he was actually the presentation I made earlier today is a prime example. If you remember the bullet of the timelines, Principal Police and I essentially kind of stumbled across the math, the need for the math resources, right? And in my time here, I feel that that's sort of been the way I've identified a lot of the bigger needs in the district in that I've, things have been brought to my attention or I've discovered things in more or less a haphazard way as opposed to, and that, and we've identified this through a lot of the work we did this summer, you know, we've really identified a couple of key areas as a leadership team, one of them being the quality tier-one instruction. And one of the things the team identified was the need for really understanding what is being put in front of students on a day-to-day basis. And what is, what is being taught to students and what are the materials that are being used to teach the students? And that's part of a comprehensive, and I do, I think it was Ms. Tully who used that word, a comprehensive audit of the materials and the curriculum that it is that we're putting in front of students on a day-to-day basis. And while, yes, you know, in the pre-K to 12, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, it's, you know, not realistic for, if you were to ask me today, you know, what is being taught to a second grader in history on October 3rd, right? I'm not realistically going to be able to give you that answer right now, standing here. It's like too wide of a scope for me to have all that information walking around with me in my pocket. So for us to have, to go through a comprehensive process of really fully understanding in the key areas, and again, we would have to do some prioritization, and we talked about that, where are we going to focus, what are we, what do we identify as the key, and which is, I think is what you're getting to, Madam Chair, like determining like what are some of the priority areas, where are we going to focus, how are we going to focus it? But determining a, a, and I think that was what the committee was talking about, is like, so then we would, you know, the goal would be something around me coming to you with, here's the process for how we're going to do it, you know, do we have the internal capacity to do it or do we need some, some external support for that? If we do need external support, is there a budgetary component to that so that we would need, I would need support from the committee in the next budget process in order to start a full audit in the 20, I'm losing track of the years, 23, 24 school year, so that, you know, I'd be presenting a process to you that you would, I'd be requesting budget support for, for FY '24. I lose track of all the changing pieces here, but, you know, then that was sort of what we were discussing as a, as a group. For something this large, and that this year it would be you supporting the implementation of a process that might be multi-year, right? And so how do, how do we write something that sort of understood that this would be something that we would be getting started in this year? So I think that's kind of why the language is a little vague, because it's, it's a big thing and, and I would need to come to the committee with, here's the process, here's what it would look like, and we, I don't have all that for you today, so.
Yeah, I think one of my, so I think one of the words that T N U uses proactive should be in the goal, because it should be something like, the school committee takes a proactive approach, supporting a district-wide comprehensive curriculum audit while supporting the, the curriculum direct, what is?
Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Thank you, that word. And then that encompasses what I, what I feel you just explained and for the person that looks at it and goes, oh, we're reviewing the curriculum, that better defines, I think, what you guys were trying to get at. But what I was also hearing, and it may have been you, Danielle, looking for more specifics in what curriculum is being taught, is that what you were saying?
I'm not, no, okay. So I misunderstood what you were saying. I thought someone was looking for like, you know, what's happening in pre-K through K through one through two, is it all consistent between each school? You know, is, is grade two in Harwich following the same curriculum as grade two in Chatham, which you know how I feel about that. And I've been, like Mark's my hero since he's come on, and probably why I'm a little protective of him, because I'm like, no, he's doing it.
No.
This is his. This is his baby. So, that's it, that's all I got. Ms. Anderson?
So, if it read that the school committee will support a comprehensive wide curriculum audit that takes a proactive approach?
Period.
Period.
No.
And then we would add an action step to review our policies related to curriculum. I just, although I could probably praise you too for your work, I don't know that you're doing it alone. I believe there's other people involved, maybe some other admin that you're talking to. So, I don't know that we should, like, just put him.
So, how about if it just says, the school, the school committee will take a proactive approach to support a district-wide comprehensive curriculum audit? The school committee will take a proactive approach to support a district-wide comprehensive curriculum audit. And then you're going to add a third action step, review of our policies related to curriculum.
As a third action step, and then leave the other two.
I have one thing.
Ms. Rogers?
We're not being proactive, he's being proactive.
Yes, exactly.
So, the school committee supports a comprehensive and proactive district-wide curriculum audit.
Okay, because I, Tina said, we're trying to take a more proactive approach of being prepared when, you know, all of a sudden CITICs changes and we need to, you know, or there's, you know, diversity questions in what are we teaching? So, I see both. So, I, either way, proactive is proactive, no matter who's doing it. My biggest hesitation in this, and I'll go right back to what I said in the beginning, is that it's already work that's happening, sort of, and I'm, I don't want to put more on the plate than you're already presenting and doing.
Yeah, so.
So, is this, I always ask, is this attainable? Is this, does this, how are we helping you? How does this help you?
Yeah, so, I would, when we discussed it in the workshop, I would say it helps in a couple of ways. One, I think it aligns with work that your leadership team thinks is important and valuable. It's work that we discussed over the four days of our retreat, that we think is important work that needs to move forward. If we carry it forward over multiple years, which it's a pretty big project, it's something that where the committee, the superintendent, the leadership team, and ultimately the faculty, the entire faculty will all be rowing in the same direction because we're going to be all, in some way, working towards this, right? So, it provides alignment up and down the district and across the district, which personally I think is valuable. And it gives, you know, when we start different processes, like budget, when we have conversations around the policy, like, these are places where all those things then start to connect, right? So, when we're coming to you in, gosh, just a couple of months and start talking about budget, and we, you know, we're potentially asking for items that are related to this, you know, it ties in directly to your goals and we're not asking for some one-off that doesn't feel like it's connected to something, these, all these things start to row together to carry that analogy a little further.
Okay, great, thank you. Ms. Tully?
I forget where we landed with our language, so I'll just offer one more suggestion, and perhaps it's been said already. To support a proactive, comprehensive, district-wide curriculum audit. I just said comprehensive and proactive.
Okay, same, okay. Is that good with everybody? Ms. Gaines?
Just one little, okay, so, action step number one, I don't know if this, we want to include this because it might, it's financial anyway, but it's more specific. The committee will receive updates and administrative presentations regarding process and financial and staffing implications because what if in this audit, we discover we might need a couple new people for X, Y, and Z. So, I don't know if we want to put the word staffing in there because that might come up.
So, process, comma, financial, comma, or, and staffing implications?
Yeah, regarding process and financial, well, regarding process, comma, and financial and staffing implications. Because staff could be.
Presentations regarding process, comma, financial.
Mm-mm.
No, and, and?
Mm-mm.
Double and? No, no double and.
No, regarding the process.
Yeah.
So, he's, we're going to get a presentation about the process.
Yep.
And, oh.
That's what I'm saying. Comma, financial and staffing implications. I'm not opposed to it.
You'd be Oxford comma.
Right?
I'm not opposed to it. To me, when I read financial implications, staffing is embedded in that, and I understand that. So, I, I'm.
It is.
So, I'm just saying, I would be fine with either.
Yeah, I mean, it certainly is, but I know it's something that if we, I guess, in budget cycles, if you have to make an argument for a particular something that's, Board of Selectmen says, why are you adding this person? It's in there because it's, it's something we're looking at. So, I don't know, we don't have to put it in there, but I do know that sometimes those staffing positions come up in budget conversations. But I'm not attached either way.
I agree with either way.
Tina, you brought it up.
I like the word, but I'm not attached.
Why not? It doesn't hurt adding it, and it's implied in financial, so either way, it's fine. So, if you feel more comfortable having staffing, put staffing in.
Exactly.
We'll throw it in there, it's going to be great.
It's going to be great.
So, if you have to expand the staff, anyway, all right.
Or potentially, it could be a shift in staffing. So, you might actually be financially neutral, but need to make, like, reallocate staffing.
Good point.
So, it may be worth having it in there because it may be financially neutral, but you need to reposition people inside the district.
Great, thank you. We were just joined by Michael.
Get beamed in.
Sorry, I'll work on my broke.
Yes, okay. Good point.
Any other questions? Clarifications? Clarity? Comments? Or edits? Ms. Gaines?
Did we agree under goal four? Did we agree as a number three, refresh our understanding of the curriculum policy? Was that another action step?
Wow, where'd your verbiage come from?
I.
Well, you said it, so I wrote it down. Review our policies related to curriculum? What did you say?
I think that's what you said, and I just wrote it down. Refresh our understanding of the curriculum policy. Is that one of our action steps?
Are we going to blow up?
It must be the.
Is it Francisco?
I don't know.
It's not funny, Meredith.
One of these computers.
It's probably Terry's phone. It's Ann calling. Are you done yet?
Say it again, please.
Refresh our understanding of the curriculum policy. It's something Jackie said, so I wrote it down.
Okay. Refresh is great.
I didn't know if you wanted a.
I don't really like the word refresh.
That would give us each, we have.
You shouldn't say review.
Refresh ourselves.
I'm taking the review.
I just had it as review policies.
Oh, well, that's fine, too.
But I like refresh, it's refreshing.
I don't like refresh, I like review.
She said refresh, that's what I wrote down.
Not.
The review, refresh, doesn't matter.
Well, I'm re-watching the video on review and refresh, and I'm texting you later. Ms. Tully?
I'm writing it down. I would actually appreciate clarification because I hear different actions related to refresh or review. When I hear review, I think that's definitely coming back to some policy subcommittee. When I hear refresh, that means that that can come straightforward to a full committee meeting.
Refresh doesn't sound as strict as review, like, or. I like review. I think review sounds like an action. Refresh sounds like a suggestion, review sounds like an action.
How about review our understanding of our curriculum policies? See. I think, would it be review our curriculum policies?
Review our policies related to curriculum because then that encompasses if there's more than one. Review our policies related to curriculum because then you would review any policy that was related to curriculum. Yeah?
Yeah. Let's do it. Review policies related to curriculum. I'm looking at Melissa, too, just wondering if there's any, anything chiming that needs to be chimed in policy-wise.
Mark has, Mark has some, but that was more for the library and, you know, have to really look at.
Yeah, I mean.
Let's review.
But it is interesting on what you mean by policies related to curriculum.
Well, it is interesting what you talked about tonight, about the policy that you referred to about curriculum and not needing to vote on the contract prior to you purchasing books.
Well, I didn't purchase.
Touche.
We don't.
I listen.
The policy states that you don't have, actually, it's on the, it's on the website that I referred to today, that we don't.
Did you check into that policy you referred to before you bought the books?
Of course, of course I did.
Because the books were bought after you reviewed the policy today.
No, wait. The policy states that when it comes to curriculum, that the school committee will, the superintendent has, and I'm not quoting it exactly, but the superintendent has the authority to adopt curriculum resources and has a discretion to make those decisions with going through a process. And that then it is our responsibility as a leadership team to come and present the decision to the school committee, to provide the school committee with a presentation about the decision. Separate from that, you have a policy about contracts that we can't enter into contracts, like the contract for the server panels or the contract for the collaborative on the buses for anything longer than three years. So, we purchased, we went through the process for adopting the curriculum resources, I came to give you that presentation.
About your decision.
About our decision, which is well within the lines of the policy. Desi, Desi.
Which is why we need to refresh.
So, we don't go further in and off the agenda item, let's just agree that we're going to review some policies that have to do with curriculum.
Yes.
And.
Review policies related to curriculum. Whether there's one or seven, we will review them all.
I'll study up.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes.
Leah.
May I just kind of?
Clarification?
So, I want to go through from.
I have it already.
Let's go down to bottom. So, goal one, we're removing an impact. Goal two, we're adding regional agreement to red line. Goal four, I'm not sure what language we've settled on, but we have a third action step, review policies related to curriculum.
She has both of those for you.
Okay.
Yep. And goal five, SIDS. Okay. No more question or discussion? Thank you for being back up, Mark.
This will have to come back as a new first reading, correct?
Yeah, this will come back as a first reading again at our next meeting. And moving on to Subcommittee Representatives Liaison Report Strategic Plan Update, is that you, Danielle, or Scott?
You want to attack, Piment? We had a meeting with, we had our first meeting with TLA August 14th-ish or 10th? I don't remember dates and time. Generally, it went really well. There's a lot of dates that we're trying to slot in between the administration, administrative calendar and sort of district-wide understanding what's happening when so we can set up the phases and processes in place. And we're sort of waiting to hear back from what you all are, have sort of, I guess, gleaned as potential times to, to review more specific dates about how we're moving forward through our process.
It shouldn't shock anyone, but the day after the meeting, I sent them a, sort of a draft of dates from all the way through the process and have been just working with them to make sure that their consultants can be available and the dates in that range. So, we're, we're almost through going back and forth, but I think we've got a calendar that hits the deadline that we wanted to get to in our meeting, so.
So, and that'll come back to the steering committee to review and for all of us to have any other, you know, one more chance to flag any dates, and then it'll come back to the full committee to see the whole process.
Great.
The timeline of the process.
And the process. Good work. Questions? Okay. And an update from Housing Task Force, update. From Housing, Housing Task Force?
Are you?
No, Housing.
I have a little bit.
All right, so Jessica's going to start and then I'll wrap it up.
Didn't expect that. So, I reached out to the Chair of the Chatham Community Housing Partnership so we could try to explore the idea of having a set seat for a school committee member to be a part of the conversation now going forward because who knows how long we'll be in this situation. I've attended meetings within Chatham with a group of residents concerned with housing crisis and advocated as a liaison to emphasize the need as it impacts our families, teachers, and administrators, which also included checking in with select board members related to the status of housing projects throughout the town that are happening currently.
Okay, thank you. So, based on Jessica's very good work, I think it's wise probably for me to reach out to the Harwich Board of Selectmen, soon to be Select Board, about a designated seat, if that's an option. I would imagine it will be a bylaws change, so there's probably a process to that, but, you know, we were talking about whether or not it makes sense to have a designated Montomoy seat and how would that work. So, it's something we're exploring. And then the other, I have basically playing email tag with the Chair of the NOSAT School Committee because we have agreed, that's a good idea, to have a conversation with Sarah Peake and Julian Seer and hopefully our two superintendents. We just need to, I think he needs to kind of run it by his ad hoc committee, and then once we get the green light, I'm going to reach out to Sarah and Julian, try to get a date on the calendar, so, because I, we think it's wise to have a conversation.
Great.
So, that's where we are.
Great, great work, guys, ladies. All right, perfect. And superintendent's report, recognitions.
Every minute matters, and I told my out-of-town guests that I would be home an hour and seventeen minutes ago. Let's make optimistic. So, just, just to recognize a couple of really special groups this summer, our custodians have done some pretty incredible work. If you go through, you know, if you go through the buildings, you know, the floors are glistening and, you know, they have, they've just been doing a lot of great work all summer long, so I'd like to thank them for all of their efforts. I also, you know, consider myself truly blessed to work with such a fabulous admin team. I think you saw from, you know, all of our principals and, you know, and some of our assistant principals today. We have met twice in retreats this summer, so we had a retreat in July and a retreat in August. We've really been focusing our conversations and thoughts on a long-term outcome that we're striving for as a district of the, you know, the phrase that we kept coming back to is that all students feel like they belong in Montomoy and all students are successful and that demographics are no longer predictor of success and have spent a lot of time talking about belonging and what does that mean, and success and what does that mean? You know, that success isn't always just grades, you know, that there are so many other things that, that matter for success. In terms of some back-to-school updates, it was nice to go see kids playing on the new playground at Harwich Elementary School and to have a meet and greet with the, you know, with the new principal and assistant principal there, and, and that some of the children actually came over to the principal and assistant principal, but most were like, it's like, oh, there's a new playground. And to, you know, just to see that, we have been working and having conversations with the town and the contractor and the safety consultant, and it's been cleared that it's safe. We're working with, with Tom Volute to get a paver made to, you know, recognize that CPA funds were largely used to support the project and put that out there in a little brick, you know, sort of area as you, as you come up to the playground, but that's nice. In terms of staffing, we, we did have some success. Yesterday, we found a Spanish teacher.
Oh.
And, and again, I think it's, I think Joy was a little helpful with some social media outreach, which was largely, you know, do you speak Spanish? Would you like to be a teacher?
I can do it.
We can, we can, we can help. And so, we actually have a mother of two Harwich Elementary School students who, you know, who, you know. who, you know, is from, is from Colombia, and we will be working with her, and she's really excited to become a teacher.
That's awesome.
So, so it's paid off, we still have a number of instructional assistant roles to fill, that's probably the, the one area that we are still in the process of doing a lot of hiring on. A challenge that it's, we'll call it a good challenge, but it's, it's a challenge. We, every year when you look and do a, a sort of a prediction of what the, you know, what the enrollment is going to look like next year, you know, you roll up the students, and at, at certain points, you just sort of count that as students move from middle school to high school, that there's going to be some attrition, that there will be some students that, that, a lot of times, students that are school choice, that they're starting to get older, and they decide to stay in their neighborhood areas and go to, you know, go to the school in the town that they're with, or students that will, you know, seek out NOSAT, or students that are going from 8th to 9th grade that go to KIC-Tech. Apparently, our past predictors on students leaving us haven't been all that successful this year, and we seem to have a larger enrollment here at the high school on paper at the moment. We, kids haven't walked in the door, but, but I think we were expecting about 685, and we may be over 720.
Wow.
So, so-
It's supposed to be.
So students have stayed. It's a good thing, it's, it's a good problem, but when you have to know, I put them in a classroom, it's a problem. So we're, so we're working aggressively there to resolve a, a larger bubble, because, because we always have had this bubble that's, that's now currently sitting at the 8th and 9th grade, it's just that the bubble's bigger than we thought it was going to be. You know, we were, so, again, good problems, but, you know, but a challenge. And so, and then finally, a week from today, or a week from this morning, will be convocation, so next Wednesday at 8:30 in the high school auditorium, you are welcome to come. I need to have the Chair or a volunteer or be, deliver a school committee welcome. Is that?
Yes, thank you for the invitation, and we will figure that out.
Okay, so just, just let me, just let me know.
Yep.
And last on the list, at next Tuesday's Chatham Select Board meeting, they'll be discussing the stepping stones parcel that we have taken a vote to, surplus to them. I'll go at least be present virtually at that meeting, but, but that's up and coming, so to connect to other conversations that we've had. That's it for me.
Great, thank you so much. All right, and we have, I'm looking for a motion to approve the prior year invoices as presented in our packet, and I just, I don't think you need to list them all, because they're presented in the packet, but if you can give the total at the bottom, that would be great. Ms. Henderson?
I'd like to move to approve the prior year invoices in the, a total amount of $18,723.79 as presented in our packet.
And a second?
Second.
And we'll call Ms. Stout?
Aye.
Ms. Tully?
Aye.
Ms. Games?
Aye.
Ms. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Henderson?
Aye.
And the Chair is an aye. Declaration of surplus. Ms. Henderson?
I move to approve the declaration of service surplus as presented in our packet.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we'll call Ms. Stout?
Aye.
Ms. Tully?
Aye.
Ms. Games?
Aye.
Ms. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Henderson?
Aye.
And the Chair is an aye. And we do not have the presentation of the warrants this evening, as Michael is not with us, but we will have our designated signee go and sign the warrants, and they will be present at our next meeting. And may I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. And-
Second.
Thank you. And we'll call Ms. Stout? Okay. Ms. Tully?
Aye.
Ms. Games?
Aye.
Ms. Rogers?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye.
Ms. Henderson?
Aye.
And the Chair is an aye. And we are adjourning at nine, I don't know, 27?